Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. All right. First up on our agenda, our recognitions, and we have winter athletics. And I see that we have nine sports, so we'll let who's going to be the lead speaker.
I'm pretty much going to turn it right over to our athletic director, Stephanie DeVoss.
All right. Now, just ask the board members, we'll just hold our comments or questions till all the sports have had a chance to respond or present.
Thank you for having us this evening. We have a mock cover and we've tried to prep the kids here and chose some last-minute speakers, so hopefully they're ready. So, the first two we have to introduce and start off is Shayla Wallen and Ty Hugel.
All right, so we'd like to congratulate the following seniors who had a top GPA for their sport. Samantha Evans, Isaac Young, Izzy Hanson, Anna Lane, Julia Nelson, Natalie Miller, Erin Squires, Eric Small, and Isaac Hatch.
And congrats to Cole Goodbo, who signed a national letter of intent to play football next year for the University of Wyoming.
Also, congratulations to our JV Raiders, who were state champions in both Palm and Jazz.
Anna Wilgren and Isaac Young were chosen to represent HHS as WIAA Scholar Athletes. And each high school only nominates one male and one female.
We'd also like to congratulate the girls' golf team for being honorable mention status in Division One for the Team Academic All-State Award. Congratulations to Paige Hillman, Sidney Killte, Chloe Germain, Madeline Soderberg, and Lauren Gertchen.
And congratulations to Ella Stein from the girls' swim team, who received All-State honors by placing second at State in the 100-meter breaststroke. Now, we'd like to turn it over to the boys' basketball team.
Before we do that, I would just like to also give girls to hear a second. I know that today we, I had word that Shayla is signing with St. Thomas. So, we have numerous kids that have signed at Division Two and Three level, and we are having a college celebration. I believe it's May 3rd where we recognize all the kids. We do do a formal signing for the Division One, and that's why we did point out Cole Goodbo. But we do have a number of kids, I'm not sure, where are you going, Ty? Milwaukee to run track.
Maybe basketball.
Basketball. So, we're putting, gathering those notes now, and we'll celebrate that, and we'll bring that back then for the spring athletes, and we'll let you know what these kids are doing. So, go ahead, boys' basketball.
This past season started out rough, but the girls pulled together and cranked out a great end. The players were close and enjoyed playing with each other. The basketball team has always been a second family to me throughout my high school career, and this year was no exception. It was a fun year that I am sad has come to an end. This season definitely took some adjusting, too, since we had a new coach and very little privacy experience on our team. The first half of the season, we were just figuring out how to play together, but after winter break, we didn't lose a game until our season-ending playoff game against Kimberly. Our team ended up bonding through our beginning-of-the-season struggles, and we had a pretty good team chemistry by the end.
And at this time, I would like to introduce to you our new first-year coach, Jess Vadness. Okay, Jess played for us about five years ago, and went on to college, was two-time All-American, and I get her maiden name mixed up with her married name, so go ahead.
I guess I'm just flattered you think I played five years ago. I actually graduated in 2004. This is my first year. We won state championship my sophomore year, had the opportunity to come back and coach my alma mater, which I thought was just a great opportunity. And the girls, I don't know if you had said, but we won the conference this year and had a really, really great season and look to improve on that next year.
I would like to flip back to boys' basketball. We don't have any representatives this year. The boys' basketball did go up, if you can scroll down, Tim, back up. They went close to 500, they were eight and 14 overall, but they are returning 11 letter winners. And I know Coach Dornfeld is exciting about the next year and just building on what he has. So, it will be another good year for boys' basketball. The next sport then we have is cheer and stunt. We don't have representatives for that, they couldn't make it tonight. The, I'm not going to read it to you, but Coach Robley and that girl, and the girls had another successful season in cheer and stunt. And then up on the board, you can see a picture of them. And then we have gymnastics. Gymnastics representatives. And Coach Boprey, would you please come up?
Hi, I'm Taylor, I'm one of the captains, and this is Anna Lane, she's the other one out of the third one coming to come tonight. This year was a really successful season as we placed second in conference, having our all-time season high. We placed second at sectionals, which brought us to State for the first time in like 20-something years as a team. We finished seventh overall at State, and we had three individuals go to State, myself, Caroline, Erickson, and Paige Hillman, two freshmen. And we all placed reasonably well at State. And we had three people who had conference honors, first team, second team, and honorable mention.
So, yeah, just over the course of the year, our season, I'd say we all grew really close together as a team and have had a lot of fun traveling to all the meets and all the spaghetti dinners. We also like to say a big thank you to all the parents and friends and teachers who helped us and supported us.
This is my second year coaching, it went really well. I had an awesome assistant coach, that's a social worker for the county, that was there to help me this year, which was awesome. Really strong team, really, really nice girls on my team. I think they all got some kind of academic honors, really smart girls, don't turn really hard at school, just nice girls to be around. A lot of really talented freshmen coming up, so it'll be exciting to see where we go from there. The goal is always to beat River Falls because they're super strong, and we are getting so close. So, hopefully next year, we can report that we beat them at conference.
Thank you, Katie. I would like to add, I did get a phone call today from the state, and they, these girls don't even know this yet, but the WIAA has announced that they received the state sportsmanship award. We will more than likely honor them at possibly the halftime of an event next fall, and as they will receive a nice banner to put in that brand-new facility, and hopefully we can gain many and many more. So, huge accomplishment, thank you, you did a good job. Okay, the next we have, the boys' hockey team, please come up, all of you. Mr. Gornick just said he's glad he had his speech prepared. Brooks was supposed to be here with the trophy, and we've all, are in panic mode, so Grady, you want to come up here? Jack, you were talking. Jack Flattam.
I'm Jack, and this is Grady and Jordan, our other captains. And we had a successful season, conference champs with an 11-0-1 record, section champs, and state champs with the best record in high school history and most wins in high school history with 29-0-1. We beat Eau Claire Memorial, a big conference rival, and the state championship, seven to one. We beat, we won the Minnesota tournament, the Schwanz Cup, walked through that pretty easily. Looking forward to next year, got a big goalie coming back again, young team again, yeah.
Okay, so, this team, as I said, is when we had a pep rally for them when they came back, and I'm going to just kind of reiterate what I said, but from there. This is a team that, after we had a key player, a couple of key players leave last year, you know, everybody asked, "How are you going to do, how are you going to be?" And nobody really knew, except for these kids in their heart. And by the end of the first couple of games, they made believers out of all of us. Because we never, I mean, yes, in their hearts, they believed that they could do this. And they went all the way and proved to everyone that they were state champions. So, congratulations to you guys. I know Coach Lockwood, we had numerous, we had numerous awards and honors at the end of the banquet. Jordan, MVP of the tournament, can you, Kate, that's why I want you to come here and tell them what happened.
So, I was up for Player of the Year, and I was a finalist for that, and then I also won the Davis Druski Defenseman of the Year award for Wisconsin, so.
And that's an award that gets a lot of times overlooked, but with Davis being a former alum, this is a huge award. So, we're proud of Jordan and all of them. So, thanks, and congratulations to Brooks Lockwood on his second state champion. Thank you, guys. And next, we have girls' hockey.
Okay, hi, we're girls' hockey. We had a really good season, we were 23-3 in the regular season, and that was like a record-breaking record. And so, we were really happy with that. Throughout the season, we just all grew together really close as a team, we were playing well. And playoffs, we got a bye in the first round, then beat Hayward four to three, and then lost Eau Claire on the final step to go to State. So, we were kind of disappointed in the end, but really happy with the rest of the season, and yeah.
Here are a few of Anna's accomplishments.
I was also nominated for Player of the Year, and I was a finalist for that, and then I also got Defenseman of the Year. I was nominated for Miss Hockey. I got All-Conference Player of the Year, and I think that's it.
Yeah, so, lots of individual achievements, which is awesome, and I always tell these girls, you're a product of the team around you. And like Natalie just said, like how close of a team they were, we really grew as a team. Just the overall atmosphere was super positive, and it was just great, tons of fun coaching this team the entire year, and kind of can't wait to do it again next year. But, super proud of this team, we lose a really good leadership group of our eight seniors that we're losing, too, but they really paved the way for incoming success, hopefully in the near future.
Thank you. We will miss these girls. And this is, Matt Superior is in his first year as head coach. Matt did an outstanding job, thank you, Matt. The next thing we have is Raiders.
Hi, we're Chloe and Ashton, we're the captains of the Raiders varsity dance team, and we're just going to kind of talk about our season.
Okay, I'm Ashton. We had, the winter season started with four opener competitions, and we took all four of our dances, and we took first with all of the dances, and then we went on to conference, where we were Big Rivers Conference Champions, and then we went to regionals, and we were region champions.
And then with winning regionals, we qualified for State, and we went to the State competition, and we got the highest-scoring season in Raider history with runner-up in both jazz and hip-hop dances. And then we also took three girls for All-State, and all three got on the All-State team for. And then our JV team won State with their Palm and Jazz routine.
And we have, our coach for Raiders is Kristin Vandembrekki, and the lovely Kim Hoff, mom here, so.
And Monica Servie.
And Monica Servie, and then our JV coach was Corinne Aaron, so, thank you, girls.
Hi, I'm Eric Small, I'm one of the two captains of the team, the other one was unable to be here today. This season, we had a really strong season. We started out really high, one of our first meets, we beat Eau Claire. For those who don't know, swimming, Eau Claire, Memorial, and North are combined. So, we beat them, becoming the first Big Rivers Conference team to do that in 28 years. And then, we went through the season, in the middle of the season, we had quite a bit of injuries and illnesses, but we pulled through and in the end had a really strong finish, got second in conference and sectionals, and sent five swimmers and one diver to State. Next year, we are looking forward to getting a lot better. For those who don't know, unlike most of the other sports, swimming this year, we did not have a single senior on the team. So, next year, we're hoping we'll come back with the full team that we had this year, plus a bunch of new swimmers.
Yeah, just want to thank you again for the continued support for the boys' swim and dive season, and also for the girls' swim and dive season as well. But, one thing that Eric forgot to mention, and I might have to steal his notes here in just a second, was one of the cool things that the boys organized this year was a fundraiser, a toy drive for Grace Place, which was a phenomenal kind of result. And as a result, the boys were able to collect 16 clothing items, 27 toys, books, marker sets, totes and purses for young girls, and then over $200 in cash and gift cards. It was a great way for the boys to kind of give back to the community and get some service learning in as well, so.
Next, we have wrestling. Now, remember the last year when I said that the end paid five dollars and we used to smile? Look at him now.
Okay, I'm Mitchell Anderson, and senior captain this year. We had an awesome opportunity, being able to practice in a new wrestling room this year. The wrestling room was one of the first to undergo the construction at the school, and we had a new smartboard that we could watch film on down there, and we used that a lot. We had brand-new mats and a bigger space to wrestle in, and we just want to thank the coaches, the community, and the school for giving us the opportunity to compete and succeed this year.
All right, I'm Jake Anderson. We had a great year, we won conference, regionals, and just missed out on another trip to Team State. Individually, we had three regional champions, four state qualifiers. We had five individuals make first-team All-Conference, five make second team, and one make third team.
Okay, what you left out was, of the four state qualifiers, who finished in what place?
I took fifth at State.
You took fifth at State, and what else?
His first three-time State place winner.
Thank you. Wait, we didn't hear you. First three-time State.
Place winner in Hudson history.
Numerous records broken as well, so congratulations, good job, nice job, I agree. Okay, before I break, can we do the last one? Ross, you took my prompt, Coach Campbell from the boys' swim took my prompt, community service. And I just want to give you a few examples. I need, raise your hand, of an example of a community service project that you did this winter. Yes?
The girls' players, I'd have to go and help the younger players at their practices, like encourage them, and then we have them come to our games, ask them to sign their little practice during the evening. So, it was like we were giving them, but then they were just sad because they couldn't support us.
And I know the boys' basketball did the same thing, wrestling. And what did you do all of Thanksgiving? You served food to whom? Yes. They served food to the homeless, so, any of it, yes?
We, as a team, ran battles.
Okay, good.
We did the same thing, just go to the younger kids' practices on Wednesdays and Saturdays.
Okay, anybody else? Jack, would you have something? Okay. Okay, good, so it's not all about athletics. Anybody else? Okay, on our last, last but not least, would the Rhinestone Raiders please come up? They're going to speak first, and then we'll have Coach Minor over there give us a video that we're going to.
All right, so for those of you that might not know, Rhinestone Raiders is a group of 13 adaptive cheerleaders and 13 regular ed mentors. It's just to really promote acceptance, tolerance, kindness, and diversity among our school. Over the course of our season, we started off at the Homecoming Parade, we just walked it downtown. Then we went and performed at Wayzetta, and then the varsity basketball game, and King Cold. And then, to end our season, we actually got to perform at the Timberwolves game and shake hands with all the players. So, that was definitely a highlight for a lot of us, everyone was super excited. One way, over the course of the year, that the Rhinestones has really impacted me is that all of the Rhinestones have taught me more than I think I've ever taught them, whether it's just have a new excitement for each day, or just embrace being with others. Everyone just involved has an overall joy for life, and it's definitely what I looked forward to most throughout the day.
I'm Zoe, and how it impacted me is, it's basically my life to cheer and that. And we take different people, like if you have bad looks or you don't look the same, we take you on the team anyways, and that. And I got a new family out of it, too. And if I need help, they will be there for me, and that. And I'm really, really going to miss these people. I'm the cheer team, and, and there's a lot of love in this team. Like, if you come see us at our shows or anything, you will totally tell.
I am Jillian. So, and how the cheer team kind of impacted me is like, you get to meet new friends, hang out with different people. They will always be there when I'm feeling down sometimes. I'll miss the cheer team so much, but I'm glad to be part of the cheer team, they always make me smile so much.
I'm Amber. The Rhinestones is the best part of my day, it's eighth hour, which is the last hour of the school day. And if you had like a bad day at school, or you had something going on, they were always there to like brighten your day. And the bond that helpers make with the Rhinestones is really inspiring, because you can, you get to see the Rhinestones grow, and they, they really teach you a lot, and they're always happy, they always have a positive outlook on life. And I'm a junior this year, so I get to do it next year, and I am very excited for next season.
Thank you. Special thanks to Crystal Geigley and Molly Deato, too, for helping put this together, and they put in a lot of hours. We love these kids. These kids have so much impact on all of us, and you will see all these kids at the hockey games, the basketball, gymnastics, wrestling, supporting all of us, so, you got a lot, so, thank you, you guys, and we will miss you, too. This is a wrap-up of our winter sports season, we are well underway for spring, well. Other than the 20 inches of snow coming this weekend, so, we're trudging through it, and we're just anxious to get started and get on those new facilities. So, thank you very much for all of your support, and we love seeing you at the events. Thank you.
Before everyone leaves, just want to know, any board members that have comments or questions?
Ms. President.
Yes, Rob.
The, every weather, it's fall, winter, spring, it is always a pleasure to see the athletes come through. You study academically, you're strong, and Steph, kudos to you for really bringing out not only the academics and the leadership and all the great work from a sports perspective, but just that sense of community, that culture, and the giving back, I think is absolutely fantastic, and what you learned today is going to carry into the future. And one other thing that stuck with me was how humble a lot of you are, Anna, for instance, you know, Jacob, just, and that's just two examples. I mean, a lot of you could have stood up here and said, "Well, listen, and look at me, and look at my accomplishments," and not a single one of you, I mean, Steph had to drag you. So, again, thanks for everything you do, and I'm really proud to be a Raider.
Any other comments on that? I guess I just had a few, but Rob, you took some of the words right out of my mouth. I noted that, too, about the modesty. What I liked about the report, also the Shayla and Ty, who started everything off, I liked the conciseness of the summary, but you started off with the academic recognition and the GPA, which, never forget that you guys are student athletes, and you're putting academics first, so that's great. And I like how you sprinkled in the sportsmanship award, the fact that service learning, and then a great culmination with the Rhinestone Raiders, because that's really what athletics is all about, is it's. it's the having the fun and learning not just, um, a, a sport, but also learning something about yourself and building relationships. So, um, thank you for doing us all proud and I just want to issue a challenge since the hockey team did such a good job responding to last year's see you repeat. I wanna see a three, a three-peat for next year, all right? But, uh, thank you all.
Yes. Let's see, where's Brooks?
Yeah. Yeah. I'll see him later, but yeah. All right, very good, thank you all for coming. Right, absolutely. All right, well, we are not done with recognitions yet and, um, so now... Well, uh, next up, we are recognizing Sandy Gurkey for her six years of service on the school board. And I've served with her for five of those years. Uh, we really appreciate, um, uh, everything that you've done and, uh, I just wanted to, I guess, turn over to Nick. Did you have something?
I give gifts.
Yeah, we have, we do have gifts. I, you know, before we give you the gifts, um, and we, we talked about you, you have to stay through the whole meeting in order to get these, so we'll, we'll give them to you and then, and then Tim's gonna hold on to them during the meeting, but, uh, no, I, I would, I would echo Jamie's sentiments, you know, uh, Sandy, uh, was on the board when I got hired here three years ago. Uh, has been an outstanding, uh, board member. She's been very supportive of what we've tried to do, uh, both, uh, uh, what we've tried to do, uh, in the district and she's been very supportive of me as well, and so I've been very, very, very appreciative of that. Will be obviously missed and, uh, uh, as I told her, uh, probably four months ago, "Hey, are you sure you don't wanna run again?" But, uh, uh, absolutely will be, uh, be missing Sandy and, and her, and, uh, her definite, uh, spunk at the board table, I guess. So, uh, we have two items from the district and then I think there'll be an opportunity for any board members that would like to make comments as well, but, um, probably before we get up and present the items, I don't know if you wanna open it up for comments?
Yeah, well, let's do that.
I have a present for her. I've, I've noticed that when we have a little something to nibble on, you always take... Cheetos. This is party size, so you can party after, after tonight's meeting.
I have one friend who, this is her favorite snack and she eats them with me. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Other board members?
Sandy, I have to tell you, your, uh, your candor, I appreciate. Your, your honesty, I appreciate. We can always count on you for, um, not beating around the bush, which especially in, just from a, a general community perspective, sometimes happens more often than we like. So, thank you for your honest opinion. We don't always necessarily agree, but you're honest and you listen and you provide your input and I, I'm grateful for that.
Thank you.
And anyone else? Carrie?
Mr. President?
Carrie's gonna sing.
Uh, Sandy, as I echo what I had written about you, I do appreciate, uh, much like Rob said, uh, your honesty, your candor. Uh, you've never been shy about expressing your opinion and, uh, but I think that's a good thing and, uh, and, uh, it's, it's good not to be all like-minded. So, I do appreciate that you've always, uh, had the courage to express your views, uh, but you're also willing to listen to discussion and I've seen you change your opinions and I respect that as well. I would, I would advise you to travel more and, and enjoy your grandkids, but you're already doing that, so maybe double down. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Sandy, I, I just wanna say too that, um, you know, it, part of what you, we do as a board, um, the public doesn't see. You know, and there's a lot of hours that go into this. And I have to say that I've served with, you know, obviously different board members. We transitioned when I came on the board from a board of people who had two, three, even six terms, uh, seven terms on the board, to a board that now you are the most senior member as you. Yes. And, um, but I have to say that I've never seen anyone as prepared as you and that's really important. I mean, that shows, um, great boardsmanship is to read the materials, be prepared. We know you read the materials because you're so good on the spell checking. And the grammar. And, um, I wanted to say too that I, I, you know, I really grew to appreciate, um, what you add to the board and you actually made me a better president from when I started. And what I appreciated was while you're a principled person, there's no doubt, um, you also were open-minded and I've seen you look at, um, all the issues from both sides, which is really important. And, um, you called for a lot of, uh, roll call votes, but I think that that just emphasized that we're not here to just be nodding heads necessarily. And, um, I, I'm the first one, um, maybe to just say that, you know, when it came to the secondary space, which is probably one of the number one reasons that I ran for the board, is that you were right as far as what the community would appreciate and that is, you know, the high school being in its current location. Because we took a lot of heat when we had different referendum for another location in the district and location was one of the big issues that we saw and people who responded to that. So, I just wanna say, um, thank you for your leadership and for, you know, well, it'll be definitely missed and this is a well-earned recognition.
So, on behalf of the district, we have a blanket, uh, that has your name embroidered on it, uh, that we present to all of our retirees, that's coming up in two weeks. Next Monday, apparently. And then also we have a, a plaque, uh, as well, uh, in appreciation. So, we're gonna get a picture, uh, over Tracy's directness over there.
But you're not done yet. We've got about another three hours, I think, based on what the way the agenda's looking. So, all right, next up, we have citizens' request to speak about non-action items. Is there any requests to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports and, uh, Dr. Nick will give us a report on construction update first.
All right, yep, uh, construction updates. We're moving along, uh, at the high school, middle school. We expect to, in the next week or two, to have a closeout report, uh, and be able to kinda tell you exactly how that, how that project finished out. Looking obviously very good at the middle school. The high school project is moving along. The, as we toured, I think about, what was it, about a month ago now is when we had the board meeting there. I think it was the last board work session, uh, that we had there. Since then, the choir has taken over their space, so they're into their space. The science, uh, s- staff is using those spaces and the kids and had an opportunity to talk to the teachers that have moved into the new spaces and they're pretty excited. And, uh, you know, when we're going through the, uh, uh, some of the more challenging times as we're working with contractors and different things on the project, when you get to ask kids, "How do you, you know, how do you like it?" And, uh, they're excited and teachers telling you that it exceeded their expectations, um, makes it worthwhile on a lot of these things. So, uh, right now, um, one of the neat things that's gonna be happening is, uh, if you haven't been by the high school today, uh, there is a very large crane that has been constructed. It took two other cranes to construct this crane. And that is to lift the, uh, fifteen-ton chiller unit up, uh, behind the third floor penthouse. Uh, and that will be happening tomorrow. I'm not sure exactly what time, but, uh, hopefully we can get some video of that. It's, it's a pretty big thing for them to, uh, be able to get that up there. And, and we'll work through that. They're also working on getting ready to, uh, demolition the roof, uh, between the gym and the, um, like where that common space was in the building, so they're real close to getting, they're gonna start that this week. The demo robots, you know, they went from having about one demo robot on site to now I think they have about four or five on site, doing a lot of demo work. I think everybody at the high school is ready for it to be, uh, done. I think the construction is, is definitely, uh, people have been just outstanding, super troopers through the process, but, uh, the noise is starting to pick up now as the demolition is getting closer and closer in the building and things like that. I think people are ready for it to, uh, to be summer and then ready for it to be done. So, that is the construction update. The April third, uh, school board election results. As Tim can, uh, put up on the screen, I believe those were canvassed this morning, is that correct, Tim? Uh, so we have, uh, three board members, uh, two returning board members and a new member, so Bob Baumann, Sue Katas, and Rob Brown, so congratulations to all three of them. I believe there will be a swearing-in ceremony sometime in the next, on the twenty-third. There'll be a swearing-in ceremony. And so, uh, congratulations on, on becoming, or on maintaining your status on the school board and then for Bob, becoming a new school board member.
Is there any demand for a recount anywhere?
There is not a demand for a recount that I'm aware of and, uh, this, it wasn't even close. So, um, unlike the Bloyd Turner referendum that lost by two votes, I think they are doing a recount down there. Some people had some questions about the Blue Ribbon Commission on school funding. Uh, what we did is we attached, um, kinda their website link and what's going on with that. We have some public hearings that are coming up when they come into our area. We do have a representative that's pretty close as far as school district representative, um, Joni, um, drawing a blank on her last name all of a sudden. Uh, she's superintendent at Grantsburg, uh, she's representing superintendents, um, and, uh, she's been kinda giving us updates. We, there haven't been a whole lot of, of public hearings, there haven't been a whole lot of process yet. What we've been kinda waiting, what I've been trying to, uh, get information to get to the board is, you know, what are their, you know, what kinda framework or what things are they looking at tweaking or changing when it comes to the education funding, uh, in the state? And so, if you're not familiar with the Blue Ribbon Commission on school funding, it has to do with, um, uh, taking a look at how schools are funded in the state of Wisconsin and, um, trying to potentially look at some changes because I, I think depending on what part of the, uh, uh, equation you're on, it feels somewhat, um, non-equitable as, as you look at it. You know, one of the things that, i- in Hudson, we've suffered over the last, uh, three years is we've had tremendous, uh, property value growth in our district, um, and our student enrollment's been pretty stagnant. And so, we've seen a pretty large reduction in our state aid over the last three years. And so, um, almost being penalized for having successful, uh, properties and things like that. And so, uh, they're gonna be looking at all those different types of things. As I have more information for you, I'll be bringing it, uh, to this group and, uh, we can add this as kind of a running agenda item on the, on the board, uh, meeting and just, you know, it's kind of an update. I anticipate on Friday, uh, Joni will be providing an update to the, uh, CISA eleven superintendents on Friday, so I should have more information after that.
Any questions about the Blue Commission, Blue Ribbon Commission on school funding? Again, something that's really needed, but, um, I met both Representative Kitchens and Senator Olson at, um, one of the Wasby events, um, earlier this re- winter. Seems like years ago because of how long winter's been, but, um, those are two of the only people, I think, in the whole legislature that have actually served on school boards. Two of the few anyway. And, uh, both of them are trying, you know, real committed to wanting to hear from a wide range of people and different viewpoints, how we make state funding, you know, more fair from whoever's perspective. So, they're, they've obviously have a huge job in front of them, but, um, thank you for reporting on that, Nick.
Uh, Mr. President, just a thought, uh, when, uh, if and when the, um, hearings get closer to our area, we'll probably have some discussion and maybe one of us or several of us can go.
I'm sure they'll be issuing lots of reports too, interim reports maybe, but...
Yeah, absolutely, Sue, and, and we'll continue to look at that and I'll have, make sure that Tim kinda keeps the, what we can do is Tim can kinda give you an update on a monthly basis for the Blue Ribbon Commission since it's the funding related and then also keep you up to date, uh, as far as if it's coming within, let's say, a hundred miles of, of Hudson and so that we can give people plenty of notice when that's happening, so. All right, next item on, on my report I have is the Wasby Regional Meeting. Uh, so, that is May, Tim? No, it's not May seventeenth.
May ninth.
May ninth.
For our CISA anyway.
Yep, for our CISA unless you wanna travel down to somebody else's CISA, but that wouldn't make much sense. Uh, so, if you have interest in, in attending on May ninth, um, please let Tim Minor know and we need to know probably in the next week or so, so that we can get registered for that. I believe ours is in Turtle Lake, uh, so, um, it's about an hour drive up there. It's not, it's not too bad, there's usually dinner and then there's a, um, it looks to me like they're going, the topics are gonna hit, are gonna be open meetings, public records, conflicts of interest, and, uh, a board's power and duties. So, that's, you know, although I know some board members have been to that, uh, uh, and heard some of those things, I think it's always, always good to have refreshers as we work through, you know, some of those different, different items and, and there's always changes to the law as different cases have settled out and as the legislature has, uh, kinda walked through their stuff as well, so. The last thing I wanted to touch on is the school safety grant update, so, um, as you are probably aware, the legislature, uh, and then the governor signed a hundred million dollar, uh, package for school safety, to improve school safety in the state of Wisconsin. It's still a little foggy exactly what the parameters are. Tracy's put together two, two grant requests. Uh, one grant request is for, to potentially do another, um, active shooter scenario, uh, like we did. It would've been three years ago, I think was the last time we did that. Uh, we would potentially be looking at, uh, conducting a full-scale with multiple agencies at the middle school prairie complex is what we'd be looking at. And then the second grant was to look at, um, uh, potentially, uh, funding of 3M safety film on some of our areas that have glass and, and working through, uh, in the buildings and things like that. And 3M safety film is, it's not a ballistic film, it is a, um, what it does is it holds the glass in place so that if there's an intruder or things like that, um, when the glass does break, it doesn't allow you to actually make it through the glass, it holds it in its, in its place. And, uh, there's some different videos you can see online, but we're starting to look at, it, look at that because some people have had some questions about the amount of glass that we have, both in the high school and then also in some of our elementaries that have already been, uh, remodeled and things along those lines. So, uh, questions or, I don't know, Tracy, if you have anything you wanna add on it?
Uh, the only thing I would add is that we did receive a response back from the Department of Justice that they have received our, um, letters of interest. And as, uh, Dr. Olet had stated, it's, it, there's a lot that needs to be decided yet at the state level as far as putting in place procedures and how they would disperse the money.
So, that was one of the things that was kinda, okay, here's the money, and then it was given to the Department of Justice, uh, to distribute, not, uh, the Department of Public Instruction. Um, I'm sure you can kinda read between the lines on that one. But, uh, it's just, it's a one-time one hundred million dollars, but it doesn't have any parameters like, hey, you gotta give it all away in the first six months or the first year. I mean, so what we don't know is, okay, are they gonna give away twenty million dollars a year for five years? Are they gonna give away, you know, how are they gonna break it up? And, and so, what we, what we wanted to do is, is get some grant requests in early, uh, so that they knew we had interest in, in the funding and, and seeing what else we can, what else we can do with it, so.
Nick?
Yeah.
Is it, uh, first in, first selected?
We, we just don't know. I mean, so there literally is almost, uh, a no parameters around this at all. So, we, we wanted to make sure that if, if it was first in, first selected, that we were getting our stuff in. And a lot of that came from information we were getting from our state organizations, both Wasby, WASDA, and, uh, Whispera, that said, you know, "Hey, you wanna at least make, let them know that you have, uh, uh, requests" and, and start to put this stuff together and, and we just kinda formatted it around what we've done with previous grant requests. So, they didn't even have a grant request form at this point, so, we, I'm sure there'll be more paperwork to follow. With that being said, that, that is, uh, the superintendent's report at this point.
Well, now we move on to more reports and, um, is there any particular order? I mean, we've got them listed A through E here, but, um, I'll defer to you, uh, Nick, how, which one you want? Nick, which one do you wanna bring up first?
Yeah, we'll just, we can just, actually, we can knock B off real quick and easy. So, I just wanted to make the board aware, I was given a letter or an email from the city of Hudson that has called for the Joint Review Board for what's called a Tax Increment Finance District. They've, they've called that board together, so if you remember, the, the TIF Board is what it's called, it's, it's made up of represent, representatives of the taxing entities for properties that are within the city of Hudson when they're looking at doing tax increment financing or creating a tax increment financing district. If you remember correctly, we looked at this last July when we granted one for the Dog, the Dog Track. Now, they are looking at wanting to do a TIF District, I believe TIF District's number six, it's downtown. There's an area downtown they wanna look at. I don't have a lot of information on this, I just wanted to make you aware. I'm assuming, and, and I could be making the wrong assumption, but that you would like me to go to the meeting and get the information as the representative for the district. I feel that once we get the information from the first meeting, I'll be able to bring it back to the board and then the board can let me know how they would like me to represent the district as far as voting on that, voting on that committee. So, I, I don't have the information yet. I, I was hoping I would have it by now, but they said they, they weren't gonna give it to us until we actually attended the review meeting. So, I put it on as a placeholder just to make you aware, so I don't know if anybody has any questions about that?
Do you think that's expected before our next work session?
Yeah, I think it is. I think I, did you see it on the calendar? Yeah, I, they, yeah, they, they had sent an email out requesting a meeting and then I had sent something back and then I haven't heard anything yet, so. I'll get ahold of Mike Johnson, who's the Community Development Director for City Hudson and just finalize it. Okay, so the answer would be no unless they give it to me ahead of time.
Okay, but nonetheless, I mean, you have to have the meeting and then once you get more information, come back to this board before we would have a.
Yeah, so there's no action being taken at first meeting. The first meeting would be an introduction to the TIF District number six. Something to just, as a heads up, as it relates to tax incremental districts, the Dog Track did close about a week ago. And so, I believe that is full steam ahead now with the, I always mess up this name, Tim, it's Phillips Medusa? Medisize, okay, is the large corporate anchor on that property. And so, with the city, when I talked to them, they felt really good about that, the fact that that TIF District's actually now scheduled to build out a heck of a lot quicker than what they originally were planning, which is always good for us too because then is, they can close it out quicker and then that becomes part of the tax rolls as far as the school district and the other taxpayers in the school district getting the benefit of having them here, so. But that looks like it is full steam ahead now.
Anything more on the TIF? Here are none, then we have boundary exception process and clarification. I think board members in your packet, you received a copy of a report from Andrea to Nick and I'll just turn it over to Nick and Andrea at this point.
So, the boundary exception process and clarification, so we need to start down this, this, this path. And we talked about this, I would say, a month or two ago from a standpoint of as we get ready to head into the resetting of elementary boundaries, you know, we'd walk through what our current practice is and then talk to the board about, do you wanna continue down that current practice? Would you like to see us make some changes to that and what that process looks like? And so, Andrea had drafted a memo, I asked her for the process and some history on this and she had drafted the memo and I distributed that back to you about the 28th of March on what the practice has been, because the reason I say Andrea is because Andrea is her office that handles it. I haven't, I haven't been involved in boundary exceptions until this year when we've had some people that have challenged the denials, so. I'll have Andrea kinda walk through what the process has been since she's been here or even before she's been here and then kinda walk through some other items.
Sure, so, as you can see from the memorandum, prior to me starting, it was all unwritten practice. I was informed by my predecessor Nancy Sweet of the practice, which is primarily, the nuts and bolts of it is that when faced with a boundary exception request, we receive that request, we, I contact the building principal at the homeschool. So, where they, where their house dictates their enrollment, I contact the building principal of the requested school, talk to them, look at the existing enrollment at the time of application or at the time of processing and then make a determination as to whether or not adding that student would affect the class size guidelines, whether it would push us above the class size guidelines or not, whether one school, oftentimes it seems as Holton, is well below class size guidelines and we need more kids there as compared to one that's about to butt up against the 22, for example, for K2. And so, we look at that. Historically, we have not added or approved requests that would push class sizes above the class size guidelines. We've also historically, since I've been here for the past five years, not added a section to accommodate a boundary request application because that would add additional expenses for the district. So, as we applied that process to this year, we also treat kindergarten a little bit different and that's not detailed in here, but I'll explain it to you in one quick second. So, we hold the kindergarten applications until we meet with the elementary principals because we have kindergarten, it used to be called kindergarten roundup, but it's like kindergarten registration day in January. So, we have that where we get initial numbers. There's now then about a month process where they go through the different buildings, go through verifying the numbers. After that verification, we set up a meeting and I believe the meeting this year was 23rd, March 23rd, or 26th. And then we go through all of the list for the kindergarten applications for boundary exception requests and as a group come to a consensus and make a determination. It's the same process we've been using for the last few years since I've been here. And again, we don't grant requests that exceed our enrollment guidelines that have been determined by the board. So, for kindergarten through second grade, it's 18 to 22. Third grade through fifth grade, it's 22 to 27. So, it's what our guidelines have been historically. We do give consideration if there, if we can grant a few, we sometimes view siblings as, at least historically, we've had that as a consideration, but not if there's not space to begin with. And so, if there's, if a number is butting up against the class size guidelines, we do not approve it. And that's how we approach it. There's some detailed analysis in terms of the history and you can see that since 1314, we've been tracking it in more detail. That's when I started, it was in 1314. And we have had about forty denials. Certainly, you can see it goes up and down depending upon the particular year. And the unique thing with this year, the only process change that we've utilized for this year is that with the boundary resetting process that's starting now, we are granting all, any approvals of boundary request applications are one year only because we don't know what's going to happen after the resetting of the boundaries. So, there is no continuing approval of boundary exceptions beyond next year, so the 2018-19 school year.
So, a couple of things on this is, over the last few years, our elementary enrollment has been trending downward. As you know, we've reduced number of sections in elementary classes, you know, grades and things along those lines. As what we're starting to see is we're starting to see the enrollment pickup. Now, one year does not make a trend as we all know. So, what's happened is because we have reduced sections to, you know, to the appropriate levels to the bound, or to the course size guidelines, there's not as much space. There's just not as much extra space. And so, right now, with the, the way it sits, with the fourteen boundary exceptions that were denied, the eleven that were granted, we are able, with our staffing that the board has approved, we are able to educate all the kids in our district. If we start going above class size guidelines, and we have not done that in the past for boundary exceptions and for open enrollment. Now, have we gone above class size guidelines with move-ins? Absolutely we have. But we haven't done self-inflicted, go above class size guidelines. You know, that's where, right now of the fourteen, for example, we have, how many are kindergarten at Hudson Prairie requests?
Ten.
Ten of the fourteen want into Hudson Prairie's kindergarten and currently verified kindergartners in Hudson Prairie are?
Forty-four.
There's forty-four. We've had two move-ins in the last, we had one move out and one
One move in.
And two move-ins, I think is what it was, in the last week. So, currently, we have two sections of kindergarten at Hudson Prairie, so that would be two sections of 22. You know, without adding another section in order to grant all ten of those, that would push those kindergarten class sizes to 27 and 27. At this point, we haven't, and this is where we'd like some guidance from the board. We haven't had a good waitlist structure because it, as you can see, typically, we don't have very many that we have to deny. We just don't. So, one of the things that we have told folks that it got the denial letter is that they could, if they wanted, they could be asked to put on the waitlist. You know, the question, two questions we have for the board, how would you like us to set up those parameters? We have some thoughts on that, we, we can provide with you. And then two, at what point do you want us to add staff? So, typically, we kinda have those trigger numbers as far as, okay, if the sections get, if we have, let's say, five more move-ins to Prairie and now all of a sudden we're gonna have a section of 25 and a section of 24 in kindergarten, you know, at that point, if all of a sudden you say the board says, you know what, those are too big, add another section, and so then we end up with three sections of, what is that? Two sections of 18 and one section, or, two sessions of 16 and one section of 17. Then we would say, okay, now we would have room for boundary exceptions if, if, if the board, you know, gave the okay on that other section. That's, that's, that's kinda where we're at. I know you guys have gotten emails on these things.
And just remind board members, we're not gonna talk about individual circumstances, but just, this is overall application of policy and I would like a clarification on this flex attendance area.
Sure.
How does that work?
Very good question. So, we've had to, with EP Rock's boundary, it includes some dense neighborhoods. And over the past, I believe, seven plus years before I came, an area had been developed that could either go to Rock, could go to Rivercrest or could go to Willow. The reason it can go to Willow is because historically all buses could get to Willow because of the private schools. And so, that was part of my training from my predecessor was, when in doubt, you add a section at Willow because all buses can go there. So, when Rock starts getting on the high end of the numbers, and they were this year without a doubt, then we look at moving some of those kids who would typically have been in the Rock attendance boundary to either Rivercrest or Willow. Last year, we did more Rivercrest because Rivercrest's numbers were a little lower and Willow's were fine. This year, Rivercrest's numbers are high, so then we ultimately made the determination to add a section at Willow and moved about ten kids at this point from Willow to, or from Rock to Willow and then that evens out all of our class sizes. And so, at this point in time, certainly Prairie were at the top in terms of 22, but the rest are within our class size guidelines, including Rock, which is now 21, 21, 22, 22.
So, we got four sections at Rock?
We have four sections at Rock, four sections at Rivercrest, so we can't add more at either one of those.
And then, and how about Willow?
Willow's now at three, Prairie's at two, Holton's at two, North Hudson is at three. So, we've utilized all of the board-approved sections that have been allotted to the district for our K5.
So, the way this flex attendance works, so even if we have, let's say, ninety-six at EP Rock that live in the EP Rock district, it's not a matter of, you know, putting it out there, making a request, who wants to go to Willow, you would just assign?
We pick, because we offer transportation and so that's the key. So, we have to look at the neighborhood and know, okay, this is an area that is served by, easily gets to Willow and there's certain corridors that can access that more easily than others. And we contact the families, we make sure that there aren't siblings, that it's the first child of the family, and then again, that would be designated within Skyward as a district choice. With boundary exceptions, they do not get transportation as a requirement of accepting that boundary exception, but with district choice, they do. That's why we need to guarantee that transportation is available to the building that we assign them.
The other question I had was on this, the one-year-only stipulation. Looks like that has a history going back to when you started then. So, we've had grant, I mean, high level of number of applications until this last year is first year that we've had more denials than approvals, but for instance, ninety-nine out of a hundred approved in year sixteen, seventeen. But five of those approvals were on a one-year-only base, so which ones would get a one-year-only?
Typically, it would be parent requests in the past, a lot of it would be to finish off the school year, so they, they move mid-year. They apply for the boundary exception request just to finish that school year, so then we just preface it as then it's a one-year-only. That's probably the most common one. Other times, there are situations where there's attendance issues and we're concerned with not having the transportation and that's why we talk to principals. And it's a dynamic conversation back and forth because if there's attendance issues, we kinda give it a trial period for the rest of the year to see if not having bus transportation is a problem or not, and then they can reapply after that.
Okay, and I didn't see, and then the sibling issue, because I know that that's definitely something we've looked at for open enrollment. So, how does that work in the boundary exception?
We always give families an option of being together. It may not be the option they want, but especially with boundary exceptions, it could be their homeschool, it is their homeschool. So, we always build those numbers back into their homeschool, so it would only be if, for example, like this year with Prairie being at 22, 22, we would not grant a sibling to go over the class size guidelines. So, the family has a choice. They can either split up their children to the different buildings or they can have all of their children attend their homeschool building.
Other questions from other board members then?
Andrea, the ten students that tend prospective kindergartners from all different schools? I mean, would this be different if they were all, if they were all coming from a school? Have we ever had a situation where then it worked out because it was actually an up and down a class size?
Oh, you mean like between, like if it was Rock and Prairie, like a flip-flop of kids? We've done some of that conversation where I, last year, for example, where the benefit of having the big meeting about kindergarten with all the principals in the room is that we can look and say, okay, there's four requests for Prairie, there's four requests for Rock, you're both within class size guidelines, it's an even switch. We certainly have those conversations. Again, we do our best to accommodate the requests, but we have to keep in mind the whole perspective of all the students and not going over class size guidelines.
Other questions?
Mr. President?
Carrie.
The numbers would be lower for 18, 19 because you don't have to reapply, correct?
Right.
So, so logically, it should be going down as?
Not, no, I mean, because if you look, those are all new requests every year.
Yeah, new requests only.
Those are only new requests. That's not a running, that's not a running, so the eighty-seven that requested in 1314, the hundred and six that requested in 1415, none of them are the eighty-seven. It's a brand-new set of a hundred and six. So, we've had four hundred and eighty-eight different boundary requests over the last
Six years.
Six years.
Okay, and I'm sorry, how many of the eighteen, nineteen requests are kindergarten? Ten or eleven?
Fourteen of them are K, or, are.
Those are the grades dispersed amongst the buildings.
The total number of that were just, okay, I'll have to grab that. I believe it's about twenty of the twenty-five. It's a high percentage because we just haven't received like prospective move-ins from other grades.
I'm sorry, how about of the fourteen denied?
The fourteen denied, I believe twelve of them, let me.
Of those twelve, did they all attend 4K last year or this year?
I do not know that. I don't have that information.
Because that would certainly seem to be one criteria if we're, if we're looking at that.
How, how so?
If they were already in the school system.
But, but I mean, they might not have been in the 4K at that building.
Right, but just if they were in the school system.
We don't do building level 4K, so I, so I.
Well, that's the one variable. We haven't had 4K for all six years of this policy history.
So, are you saying if somebody's already in 4K at Prairie, they should go into, they should go into?
No, because it's only Rivercrest, Prairie and Holton that have it.
It's just, well, it's just Rivercrest, or it's just Prairie and, and North Hudson that have 4K.
Oh, Rivercrest doesn't have it.
No, they have early childhood.
But if they, if they're in 4K period, I think should be a criterion if we're looking at.
As far as given preference?
Yes.
That, that's, I guess that's what we're asking the board. So we have waiting list, and we set up the waiting list. You know, how would, how would you want it filled? I mean, do you want it as a lottery? Do you want us to say, okay, let's say, so right now Prairie doesn't have any spots. But let's say all of a sudden, we have two move-outs, and there are ten people that want Prairie. Ten kids that want into Prairie. How would you like us to decide which two kids get that? Would you like it to be a lottery system, where at, like, come a certain date, we put all the kids, basically the names in a hat, we pull them out and pick an order, and then it's filled that way? Or I guess that's the question we have, because a lot of times, we will have more requests than we'll have open, you know, open slots, even if they do open up.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy.
Does anyone here know if all school districts provide boundary exceptions for their grade schools? Is that common in school districts?
It would not, it would not be common. I mean, it, it, some districts do, but larger districts typically, you go to school where you're, where you live. Boundary exceptions, I don't have, I mean, we can pull that data, if you'd like us to pull our conference schools.
No, I was just questioning whether or not this is a common practice within school districts, and if it is not, why do we do it? Because it was here when you came and everybody came, but why do we have to continue this if this is causing this much trouble? And why don't people just put their kids where they're supposed to be?
Well, that's, I mean, that's, that I think is going to be part of this longer, larger discussion, because as we head into elementary re-boundary resetting, that will be the question that we'll have for the board. Do you want us to continue to honor existing boundary requests? And do you want us to continue to grant boundary requests, or exceptions?
Well, I'm getting off this board, but I can make a suggestion. I really question the wisdom of even having boundary requests because of the problems it can cause. And so the fifth grader starts here, and when the kindergartner comes, there's no room in that school, so they have to go here. It just causes problems for the families and the school district. Why don't we just allow the kids that are already in their boundary-requested schools, their, not their homeschool, but the other one, let them finish out their term, but don't allow anymore of any kind for any schools? That way, it'll kind of run its course. They'll all go through the school that they're in and get out eventually, and no new ones will be coming up to muddy up this water. That's my suggestion.
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
I'd like to withdraw my earlier comment that I appreciate diverse opinions. I think, I think people probably have exceptions for various reasons.
I'm sure they do.
So, I mean, whatever those are, that is the state currently. So probably need to work within the system as it is.
For this year. I mean, we're changing the system for next year.
No, I think what Sandy's saying is, what do you want to do moving forward? Not pull people out of the system.
No, not right now, no.
Even to, you know, let it, let it run its course, you've still got families with maybe another five, five kids coming along that we, then you're asking them to switch the schools, you know, split up the family and change the schools, so.
Well, you might want to adopt a policy that says if there are already kids in the boundary exception schools, and they have siblings coming up, that might all go forward with the system. But no new families who don't currently have kids within a different school would be allowed to do it. So there's ways to get around what she's saying. I just really don't see the reason why we even allow it. Though I understand those that are already in this exception district need to be taken care of, but I don't understand why we would continue to allow it.
I would say that it has enabled us not to exceed class size guidelines for the last few years. EP Rock, I would say, would be regularly above, and Rivercrest sometimes too. I mean, different years, different buildings. In some of the more dense areas, this has kind of been a release valve, for lack of a better phrase, on some of the issues we've been having with boundaries, which has certainly prompted the resetting process. That's, I mean, we need to conduct this process.
Yeah, they need to be reset. And, you know, the flexible attendance boundary is not a good situation. It's, be quite honest with you, it is, I feel embarrassing to the district when this was set up this way. Because you could have kids that live in an apartment complex that are across the hall, and they could go to a different elementary school than their kid across the hall. We haven't done that to other neighborhoods and, and other things. And so part of that, you know, pushing to get these boundaries reset to this boundary resetting process is that people can know, this is my elementary boundary. I'm not in a flexible attendance boundary because I happen to live in an apartment complex, or I happen to live in a townhome. And, and so, you know, I, I would agree with Carrie. I think there are extenuating circumstances that do cause us to grant boundary exceptions. There's no doubt about it. And I think you can see, we try to grant them. I mean, our goal is not to deny them, our goal is to grant them. The default is grant if there's space. I mean, the default is not, you know, deny, and then have to have them prove why they, you know, they deserve it. I mean, it's always been, you know, but the tough thing is, is we try to do the right thing by granting them if there's space, but then when there's not space, then we kind of get raked over the coals, like, hey, you're not being reasonable. So I, we're really in a tough spot here. I mean, and so I can tell you, if you want to add another section at Prairie, it's about seventy thousand dollars.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I don't believe we should add staff or sections to accommodate this boundary switch. I, I think that that is something that the public would, they would not go along with that, except, of course, the people who are asking for the exceptions. But that's a big expenditure of money, and it's unnecessary if you're going to start adding staff and sections in order to accommodate somebody who wants their kids in a certain elementary district.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
So Nick, historically, if we look at the number of applications denied, how often do we lose kids or kids decide to go out of district, whether it's St. Pat's or otherwise?
I, you know, it's, it's hard, it's hard to know. I mean, we don't necessarily always track that. We do typically get more move-ins. I mean, we could be coming back to you in July, saying, we have ten move-ins to Hudson Prairie in kindergarten. We need to add another section. And if that happens, you know what? We grant, we would grant to all the boundary exceptions, because we have space. But typically, we don't self-inflict class-size overloads, and the reason being is because the other children that live in that building have rights also to be in a class that is within a class-size guideline. And so that's been the practice. Now, if the board would like to change the class-size guidelines, and we want to push them higher, which I would not advocate for, I mean, you know, that's, that's an option. And, and again, the goal is not tonight to solve this. The goal is to start the conversation, because we have several months of discussion ahead of us as we work through the boundary setting. But understand that as we get ready to reset elementary boundaries, there will be boundary exception requests coming. And so, you know, these, these fourteen that were denied, or these twenty-five that were requested, it may be, it may be fine, it may be that we have a couple hundred next year that want to request and stay at their existing elementaries. And then what you'd be asking us to do is try to rebalance the elementaries based on boundary exceptions. So there's, it's, it's more than just a case-by-case basis. You have to, yes, you have to do what's right for each kid, but you have to balance that with what the system can handle as well. And so I think that that's an important thing that the board's going to have to keep in mind as we kind of set the parameters on this. You know, one of the things that we want to talk about, or get at least some level of direction, is on the waitlist. Would you like to see the waitlist created via lottery? Would you like, I mean, how would you, if we're going to pull kids off the waitlist and place them, how, how would you, how would the board like to see us do that? I mean, we can just, we can just do it and determine it, but I'd like to know what your, what your thoughts are as well.
Mr. President, I think one of the things I'm hearing is that the, the system and the process that the school district uses to make determinations of class size and who's going to go where, they're going to go. The logic in that is very different than the logic of a parent presenting, I don't know, they go to work at such and such a time, and this is when I can drop off my child, or, you know, there's any number of personal factors that play a role in this. And I'm kind of hoping that some of those discussions will happen when we have the, you know, community committee get together. Because the way we're saying it as a district sounds perfectly logical, but, you know, I think for a parent, it may not, and maybe we can find, I don't know, some language or some, some ways of presenting this that, like, I didn't know that the principals get together, I think you said August, was it? No.
April.
April, yeah.
It was March twenty-sixth.
Right, March, yeah, they got together, and they, then they sit down and look at, you know, the distribution and so on. I didn't know that, but that's very helpful for me to know as part of figuring out the logic of where, what child goes where.
Can you explain a little bit, too, on the timeline? Because, I mean, we're sitting here now, it's April tenth. We're not, it's not like if families move in, we're saying, we're not going to educate your kids.
No, no, and that's-
So this is going to be in flux until August thirty-first or September ninth, with it?
Yes, it'll be up, in flux up to the time of enrollment, or the start.
So I think you have to do, and we've had a history of doing waitlists.
We haven't done a waitlist, per se, but we have, for example, last year, we did like a contingent denial of eight people, where we denied it, but then encouraged reapplication in August. We ultimately were able to grant six of the eight of those requests, because they were so close to the top of the enrollment limits, we weren't comfortable approving those boundary exceptions.
So if the three finals, three that were denied totally, that number could have been six higher, could have, could have been nine.
Could have been eight higher, yes. Couple of them were withdrawn as well. So, yes, there's that piece. The reason we met in March was because of K-orientation. Those are starting, actually. We had one today at Prairie, we had Rock and Rivercrest yesterday. It's kind of the week or the next two weeks of orientation. So we were trying to do a service to our families by making those determinations prior to that orientation, so they would know where they would be assigned. And that's why we have that one big meeting to make those determinations.
Just a clarifying point. So the charge of the committees, Sue, will, the boundary exception process is not a charge of the committee. The resetting of the boundaries will be. The boundary exception process will be a board decision, and, and the board will have to make the determination on whether, A, you're going to continue to allow boundary exceptions, B, for how long, and then C, what, what preference you're going to give to, to the different things. So, and again, we don't make a decision tonight, and if there's more information you would like us to bring at the next meeting, I think there was a couple of questions I think Carrie had that we weren't able to answer, that we can bring that information back. And we can draft some different samples of what that waitlist pull could look like and share it with the board at the next, at the next meeting, and get some feedback from the board, or what your thoughts are.
Can I ask one question?
You bet.
Regarding what Sue had asked, school age care starts at the same time at every school, doesn't it?
Correct.
Okay, and goes equally as late?
Yeah, school age care starts the same time, it goes equally as late. You know, some people have asked about staff members and the ability to drop off. So our, our staff is not able to have their kids with them at school. They're expected to do school age care, just like any other citizen would be expected to do school age care. So, you know, that question has come up as well. Well, if, if I can have my kids with me at, in the building that I work, then that would save money. But this, from the district's expectation is that the childcare option for our staff is not having them in their room when they're on contract time. So, do you understand what I'm saying? So at school age care, whether you're there for ten minutes, Tracy, or you're there for three hours, two and a half hours beforehand, it's the same cost you pay per session.
Okay, and if we're, if we're going to be weighing in on what any criteria would be, I would certainly expect that siblings would be a factor, rather than a lottery system.
Well, except the problem is, is if you got one spot and you got four people that already have siblings in the school, then, then what do you do?
I'm going to figure that out.
Well, that's where, I, I think what we have to do, whether it's the long-range game with, once we set new boundaries and how we determine these exceptions, or whether it's a shorter term, I think we got to make it as objective as possible. We cannot have some, you know, fifteen-page novel with a subjective criteria that goes on and on and on. I think it's got to be objective. I just want to clarify then, for these total stats here, we've got four hundred and eighty-eight new boundary request applications over the last- In six years. Four hundred and forty-eight of those have been approved. So that's a ninety-two percent approval rate, based on my calculator here. And of the ones that were approved for boundary exceptions, have we ever added a section?
No.
Okay, and how, so we've, of the ones that have been denied, has it been denied for any other reason other than we just don't have room at the school that they're requesting?
It would only be a specific situation where there were significant attendance or truancy issues. And that removing that transportation option, the building principal articulated to me that they would be very concerned about that. But I would say that I could count on one hand how many times that has occurred since I've been here.
Okay.
Mr. President, so we haven't added sections. Have we approved requests that put us over recommended classroom sizes?
No.
And one additional question. So we have twenty-five applications to date. Is that typical, that the number is small compared to the previous year's totals? Or do we think that we're going to get less this year because people know it's only a one-year grant this year?
There's certainly been a lot of discussion about that one-year issue. But also, I think, it seems to spike July, August into the year. So when moves occur, when people are solidifying where they're going to be next year, that's when we see a spike in.
Thank you.
For example, with the seventeen, eighteen, just in the last, since I wrote the memo about a week ago, it went up from eighty to eighty-six for seventeen, eighteen. So just for the remainder of this year, we've had six new requests.
Well, is, I'm waiting to hear any board members, how do you weigh in on, for this year? I mean, would you, are we going to add sections and have potentially as low as twelve or thirteen kids in a section just to accommodate boundary exception requests? Anybody in favor of that?
I was just going to say, we're supposed to be responsible for the fiscal affairs, and that doesn't sound very responsible.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy.
I would not want to see you add sections to accommodate boundary requests, no matter what. That, that is not the purpose of, of a boundary request. I mean, that, that's just overloading financially the system. You shouldn't have to do that. You end up with twelve kids in a section because you've got boundary requests for three or four, and that puts us over, so you have to add a whole section, and now you've only got twelve kids in a section, or thirteen?
Okay, then the other question that I ask, if we're not going to add, if you would not be in favor of sections, what's the temperature in the room among members as far as raising class sizes? Why don't we start, put twenty-four, twenty-five kids in kindergarten then? In order to accommodate somebody's request for their kid to go to a different school? Should we be making teachers start and teach twenty-five in kindergarten, and let's go up to thirty or thirty-two for third grade through fifth? Anybody in favor of that?
Mr. President, I'm not in favor of it, but then that hits the other responsibility we have as a board, which is, you know, the quality of the student's education and keeping them first, important.
Mr. President? I have a son-in-law who taught in South Washington County for seventeen years, and his class sizes were, were always twenty-five to thirty-five. It was chaos. I would not want to see this board raise the class sizes as they have been designated, which for us has been working well. We're educating our children very well. And I think that has to do with the size of the classes, because the teachers can provide the attention they need for all the kids when you've got class sizes where we have set them. If you raise them, I think you're asking for a decrease in the type of education or the quality of the education that they're all going to get.
I would agree to not increase class size.
Okay, and what has, you know, these class-size guidelines, which I think there's a lot of wisdom in having a range, and that's why we have ranges here, how long has that been the range? Eighteen to twenty-two for kindergarten and?
Since before I've been here. I have no idea when it was approved.
Everyone's looking at Dave as Mr. Longevity here.
Now, now, understand, just so everybody, if, if we have a bunch of move-ins, we will, I mean, we'll, we'll come back to the board and ask for another section. But that doesn't mean if we have one move-in and the class goes to twenty-three, or we even have three or four. I mean, typically, I mean, and we've had this at Holton, where we didn't split it into two sections. You know, we had a kindergarten first-grade class that got up to twenty-five, and, and-
That was based on students that lived in-
Based on students that lived in, in that attendance boundary. You know, because again, if we would have split that into two sections, it would have been a-
You know, because again, if we would have split that into two sections, it would have been a 12 and a 13. But what we try to not do is self-inflict class size, you know, class size increases. So, you know, if all of a sudden we're facing six, six move-ins at Prairie, and we're looking at class sizes of 25 apiece, then yeah, we will come to the board and say, we would recommend adding another, other section to Prairie, and then we can also supplement that with potentially some or all of the boundary exceptions.
Mr. President?
Rob.
Nick, do you have an idea, or does the team have an idea of our neighboring districts that are of roughly equal size, what their rough class sizes are? Are we comparable?
I, I don't know. We can pull that data and have it for the next meeting. You want, you want neighboring districts? Do you want comparable districts? Because we really don't have any, we don't really have any comparable districts as far as size. You know, the closest being probably River Falls. It's about 2,000 students fewer than us. But, I mean, we could, would you like us to look at Stillwater, South Wash, and then also our conference schools? Or what are your thoughts?
Comparable districts that we've, that the board has approved?
Well, like, even I would go as far as like a D.C. Everest or maybe a Wausau, just for a class size.
So, use our, so use our 10 comparable districts we use for everything else?
Pupil size, correct.
Perfect, yeah, we can do that.
Mr. President, I think also to get direction, are we, are we asking for this information because we might want to reestablish guidelines moving forward? Or are we thinking that might affect our thinking about this situation for this fall? And that's an important distinction. I mean, my gut is, I wouldn't want a situation or a few situations to all of a sudden cause us to rapidly change things in response to a couple... I mean, we have guidelines that have worked, we've followed them for five years. So, it seems like that question and that information fits more into the conversation we're going to have about once we redistrict or redraw our boundary lines, boundary attendance guidelines. What are our guidelines? What is our policy? And that the immediate question then is around, what do we want to do with the waitlist? And how do we want to handle that for these students who have requested exceptions for the...
I'd agree with that.
Absolutely.
All right, any other further comments? Do you need further direction?
No, I think we have some direction, we'll bring some additional information to the board, either at the next work session or the next board meeting. And as far as I think our, we'll bring that pieces of information, but we'll also bring some examples of what we could look at as far as sample policy for determining the waitlist. You know, taking into account siblings, as Carrie talked about, or lottery systems and different things along those lines as well, and kind of work some of those things. So, you have some different options for the board to look at at the next meeting.
Mr. President.
Yes, Carrie.
In regard to what you were asking, I'm not in favor also of adding 70,000 of the expenses, to add another section to accommodate boundary exceptions. Nor would I want to see class sizes reach 25 to 27. But I would speculate that I don't think anyone here in the audience tonight would like to see either of those situations either. I think probably each family feels that it was, they were kind of led to believe that this, this would happen for next year. And it's, it's not a wanting to see a across-the-board policy change. It's just, they didn't foresee this happening. So, it's, that would be my opinion.
Well, then, while we're on that subject, Andrea, what is, been, what's on the application? Is there some kind of statement of guaranteeing one way or the other? That something that could happen if you meet this criteria and this criteria, that your exception request will be granted regardless of the number of kids in the section?
Well, it says it's been an unwritten policy, unwritten process.
Well, it says, "Criteria to be utilized by the district is maintain elementary class size guidelines, consider individual building space enrollment capacity, allow space for anticipated growth and future student enrollment, and staffing will not be affected by boundary exception students." That's right on the application itself.
And, and people have been filling out applications for this for the time that you've been here.
Yeah, it has not changed since I've been here.
Yeah, we are going to be changing that application with a little more guidance on it. And, and it's not that, it's not that we haven't had, we have not had a hard and fast policy, but we have had a set of procedures that we've followed for the last five years. And, but they need to be, I believe, more robust so that we can work through these situations a little bit better. As Carrie said, so people don't feel as if they had a false sense of, or they were told one thing and feel like it's been kind of pulled off from underneath them. So, we definitely want to make sure that we work through those processes as well.
But, but we're not done with this year yet. As recently as last year, we had eight denials that ended up going down to three. And, I mean, we have 14 currently, but that number could shrink depending on what we get for move-ins.
Exactly.
And other requests. Are requests cut off now, or is that something that could still be...
Ongoing.
Because, I mean, if I was a parent of kids that were all under five, and it was my oldest that was going into kindergarten, and I saw that they were looking at going into Hudson Prairie, which is now already a 22, and their kid would be the 23rd, or E.P. Rock, same thing. We're basically near the max there. And I saw that at Willow, there's a section of 17 or 18. I might be moved, whereas I, maybe not originally, but if it could be done without me having to, as a parent, have to make special arrangements for transportation, I would want my kid to go to the school that's got more room. I wouldn't want to send them to the place that's going to put them over the guidelines and put more stress on that teacher.
And right now, anyone who would like to request Holton or North Hudson? They will be approved because they are under the class size guidelines. All of our other buildings are right around the 20 to 22 range.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I just want to make one other comment, that every, every grade school we have in this district provides the kids with an outstanding education, every single one of them. Though I suspect there's differences in how that education is brought to the kids based upon the building. But the parents in this district could have their grade schoolers in any of our schools, and they're all going to get an outstanding education.
Well, thank you all for your comments, and hopefully this is helpful. In the process, we'll look for more information as this develops. And, you know, maybe we'll have a family with sextuplets that want to go into kindergarten at Hudson Prairie, and it will solve this issue. But next up is the board self-evaluation.
Do you want to, you want to save that as last one and go through legislative update by board president, and then the NSBA convention update?
That's fine.
Does that work?
Yep. All right, so you're throwing it back on me. Either way, so, all right, legislative update. Well, with that, all board members get that school connections. And you saw that there were, there was the school safety passage. But, you know, we've had different, at different times, board members want to see more about legislative advocacy and so forth. I don't know that the legislature is necessarily going to be in session, even though there's been some pressure on the governor to call for some special elections. They may not even meet, but they're going to elect another senator and another assembly person. But is there anyone who has issues on, or that would want to comment? You know, we've already discussed the Blue Ribbon Commission. That's kind of an extra legislative issue because it's a separate thing. But is there any advocacy or timing of which that you want to discuss at this time?
And is there...
You're on.
Yeah, okay. And something we could look at, you know, as a, as a board, or what you could look at as a board is potentially appointing an individual every year to be kind of like the legislative liaison. So, as Sue was talking about, you know, they'd be the person that would represent the board at the, at the blue, blue ribbon funding, or they'd be the person that would try to, you know, give that update every so often. Obviously, the administration will give you updates as well. But I mean, if there was a board member that wanted to do that, or had a strong desire to that, I mean, that could definitely be something similar to like, the city, for example, has a liaison between the, you know, the, the city and the district, or a representative type of thing. I mean, that's another option if the board wants to entertain that, we could look at that as well.
I can, Sue?
I'm just going to say, there was an opportunity to do, give a two-minute testimony at Ellsworth last year in regards to the 200, 400, which was still kind of shaky as to whether...
On the educational funding.
Yeah, right. And, and there were a lot of people there. And so, I, you know, took a try at it. But I think that if something like that surfaced again, it sure would be nice if, you know, there could be some discussion here that would go into whoever would prepare testimony in front of a...
No, I mean, I think everyone's kind of waiting to see what happens in November and then moving forward. But Heather?
So, Mr. President, I, I like the idea of having someone, and I would say, as, as the newest board member, my inbox is kind of overwhelming, right? Because once you get signed up for things, all of those WASB this and NASB that. I mean, so, so all of the legislative stuff that hits your inbox feels almost... It would be nice if we didn't all feel like we had to sludge through it, that we had someone who that was really their passion, and they were going to sludge through and really help us understand which of those issues are most relevant to our district, which of those issues should we most be concerned about? Because otherwise, it feels a little bit like, like water up to the eyeballs. It kind of feels like when I'm scrolling through the list of all of the receipts and the expenditures, kind of hoping that somebody who knows this better than I do is doing the same thing, and is going to catch things that we should be paying attention to. So, I like that idea of having somebody who's really passionate and is going to commit to being the "I'll dig in" and kind of keep us abreast of the issues that we should be most paying attention to because of how much comes in.
And they could work, work with administration, so it's not like they would...
Right, right, yeah.
Float on their own or anything like that. But i- if there's, if there's some interest in that, we can kind of look at drafting, potentially what that would look like, and, you know, kind of what the parameters would be. So that, you know, again, when you have individual board members that are doing things, we'd want obviously board action on what those parameters are, so they're acting in their capacity as a board member. So, I, is there interest? I mean, nobody probably wants to speak up because they don't want to be volunteered.
Maybe we give those duties to the newest school, school board member? What do you think?
He all of a sudden started talking to somebody else.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I think those are great comments, Heather, because I, I think that really is true. We can't be experts in all things, and, well, and you know, and Rob knows this too, having been the delegate to the convention, there's anywhere from 20 to 40 resolutions that are introduced, and what, 80 to 90% of those don't really directly affect us. It's a little easier, though, with those than it is, say, with legislative, because I think what ends up happening is that there are great ideas down in Madison that legislators get, but then there's all kinds of unintended consequences that end up coming back. And what something on its face doesn't look like it affects us, and then in five years, all of a sudden, we're not the most under-levered school district in the state, and maybe we need, it would have been nice to be able to weigh in on something else. And times change and things change. But anyway, that's, leads into my next subject, which is the NSBA convention. And that was just a great opportunity. I got in last night, two minutes after midnight, pulled in the driveway, which is three and a half hours before Nick got in, or three hours before you got in?
About two and a half hours. I got in at 2:30 this morning.
2:30, all right. So, Nick and I attended...
We know who they take care of, apparently, the president, you know, on the flip.
Yeah, well, we won't go there. All right, so the National School Board Convention, I have, it's different than the state convention. First of all, I, I am very proud of our board for the attendance we had at the last state school board convention. It's a big change. From the first two years I was on the board, I was the only one that attended the whole convention. And it's a little bit different. I, I would grade the general sessions at the state convention much higher than at the federal. The ones at the state, for a state like Wisconsin to get some of the speakers that we get, they're, I think that they're pretty motivational and have had some amazing speakers that made attending it worthwhile and sitting through the different awards. But at the national level, way more commercials. You know, they're, they're having different people get up and speak about that. But you, you wade through that stuff. Terry Bradshaw was entertaining. But other than that, the generals are not what made it an amazing conference. It was the different breakout sessions that were all about 75 minutes long. I attended eight, I think. Nick, you had at least that many?
Eight, yep.
Eight different sessions, we, only two of which we both attended. And it was really one and a half, because I walked out of one that wasn't as directly applicable to our district as I thought it would be. You get, when you go to the national level, there's a lot more emphasis on diversity than there is, say, you know, in Wisconsin. It just, but what it gives you an appreciation for is that we're doing a lot of things right here in Hudson. Things that some of these presenters are telling that is cutting-edge stuff, like professional learning communities. We've been doing that for how many years, Dave? I mean...
You keep on asking 33 questions, many years.
Many years. But we've been...
A nominal amount of time.
So, professional learning communities, and, and board self-evaluation. Are you evaluating yourselves at least once a year and so forth? So, but yet there's some new things, and we're going to try and introduce some of those. And Nick and I would compare notes after we attended sessions, and there was unique perspectives. I, I don't know, we've got some plans, I would say, over the next two work sessions in April and May.
Yeah, I think, you know, as Bill Noah Jamie said, I would, I would say it was probably one of the best conventions I've attended in five years, in all the different types of conventions that I've been a part of. Planning on, you know, Jamie and I spent a lot of time reflecting on different things that we can do at the board level, district level, looking at visioning. You know, I know some of the board members have talked about that. You know, and I, one of the things that we want to do over the next couple of work sessions is start to identify what, or to define what success looks like in our district, and what it looks like from a board's perspective, and, and start to work through some of those items. And I, it was, I was pleasantly surprised. The, the sessions were very, very, very good. When Jamie talks about the general sessions, he's talking about the keynote speakers that were marginal at best. But the breakout sessions were very, very good. And actually, one of the breakout sessions I attended on Monday was led by an Okahennepin school district, just on the other side of the river. And David and I were going to be meeting in, in two weeks to go through some of the stuff that their district has been doing, that I thought was very interesting, and how they...
And they're a big district.
They're a big district. They're about 40,000 students, but, so I had emailed him, and, and we're working through that. So, they're superintendent, and we're going to, the way they implement different things and their process, implementation process and things like that. So, I would highly encourage, if board members want to go next year, it is in Philadelphia next year. It is...
San Antonio's much better.
San Antonio's probably better in April than Philadelphia. Philadelphia in April's probably not real warm, but, what's that? Yeah, yeah, Neathers, Wisconsin. But we can start planning for that. I think it's, I think it's very beneficial. And there's a lot of focus difference between the WASB conference, the state convention, which is very, I think, micro-focused. They pick topics and they, they get in real deep. A lot of the topics at the national convention were a lot about, you know, effective board teams, effective district relations and things, and working through those things. So, there's a lot of, a lot of good takeaways on different things, and so...
Well, and that's what the contest will talk about at these work sessions. I didn't want to get like way into the weeds of, you know, pull out my notes that I took at each one of these. But there were definite...
They kept emailing me, yes.
Yeah, there were definite things that we'll be able to talk about, and...
Yeah, there's some definitely good, good takeaways, so...
Yeah, so just keep that on your calendar. Next year, unfortunately, it's like a year, a week earlier. So, it's like at the end of March, it's March 30th, I think, to the April 3rd or something. Yeah, but anyway, so now that leads us to board self-evaluation. And do you have that document that you can put up on the screen? I want to thank the board members that we set a record for the shortest amount of time that we got all seven board members to fill this out. So, I, I think that's a lesson for future surveys, is don't give board members too much time to do this and do it, it's like ripping off the Band-Aid, so...
Have Tim send 54 reminders out to make sure that everybody's done it.
On this document, which, this wasn't shared with the entire board?
Yeah.
It was, all right, all right.
Yeah, everybody's got it.
So, sometimes I get these emails, and it just says my name and doesn't necessarily say all the people that was... But you do a good job of getting stuff out. So, I, I just kind of open it up. We've got, there are certain areas that we improved on. You want to scroll down, Tim? We've got some that were like, so there's one, we benchmark test results against districts with similar demographics and prior performance over previous years. I think that we've got some that feel that we've achieved that, others think it's only been partially done. But we don't really have any on these that where it was a minority thought that it was either mostly or partially achieved. We've either got five or six board members that believe we're there. Now, does that mean we're perfect? No, and we're constantly striving for improvement. We're expecting that out of our, you know, our classrooms, so we should expect it out of, you know, our board functioning. I think we've had areas of improvement in, in, in this survey, and then just... in this survey and then just how we function as a board. But any questions, what's that first, are we onto our second area here, or what was the first one? Not much for comments. This is just data-driven decision-making, which, again, that's a subject that we got a lot of at the national convention, is, that's kind of the wave, and so that's an area that we'll seek to improve. Go down then, board operations, I think we're pretty good there. Culture, is that the next one? Anybody that wants to, you know, comment, chime in? Feel free. Alright, so Tim, yeah, Tim, you sent this to us on April fifth. I know why I didn't get it, because I think it was on the plane to Texas at the time that this email came in and- Alright, I got it up now. So, one that we did not get, I guess, was a majority saying that it was fully achieved, was the orientation. So, we are, already talked about that and how we can improve that for a member, new member Baumann, when he comes on board. We'll try not to-
We have a full forty hours planned for Bob.
Not in one twenty-four hour period though, right? It's gonna not necessarily be by fire hose, but there's plenty of opportunities. And Bob's indicated he's going to go to the new member, orientation is down in Duran. I might be traveling from the opposite direction, I just found out. I'll be, but I should get to Duran from La Crosse in time.
Mr. President, may I ask a question about the orientation?
Sure.
When I went through it, then I met with all the administrators and, for orientation and so on, is, is the style similar?
So, yeah, they're still, still meet. Heather met with all the different administrators. The way we broke it up though, is we scheduled it for like an hour before a board meeting. So, scheduled it over a few months, time period. And so, you know, one meeting month, she'd get here at five and meet with Dave. And then, you know, another month, she'd meet with Tim and kind of, kind of work her way through. And then, also we did, Heather and I met right off the bat, similar to Bob and I are going to meet on Thursday, kind of that, for about an hour or two, just to kind of talk about, okay, here are the, like the critical, critical items, you just need to know right off the bat. And then the other things, you kind of just, you know, we pick up as we go, because we know that if you just get inundated with hours and hours and hours of stuff, it's, you're not going to remember it and, and it's more of a challenge. And then, as far as building tours go and things along those lines, you know, board members are always welcome to set up building tours with me, but unless people are wanting to, to do those things and I want to be respectful of their work time as well. You know, we, we'll do building tours kind of as a, as requested at this point.
But you don't have specific tour set up for Bob yet?
No, we're, we're working into the forty hours.
Yeah.
We'll be alright, no.
But-
No, no specific tours.
But like I said, board member, other board members are, you know, welcome to attend those. It's just that, well, we're gonna, Nick's got to be able to set a date, say, okay, this is, you know, when we're going to do it. And, but it can also be done upon request, so.
You know, Mr. President, one thing that, that I'd suggest, and I don't know if it exists or not, but I think part of what's hard when you start is that unless you're someone who's coming out of a school administration background, you're simultaneously trying to understand how schools run in general in the state of Wisconsin, and then what's happening here in our district. And so, I mean, the, the, the new board member orientation that WASB does is good, and I wonder, is there more we could take advantage of from WASB so that whether it's online or whatever, they're kind of getting walked through the one-on-one of no matter what district you were in in Wisconsin, here's the stuff that you should understand about how schools work, finance, HR, all that stuff. And then, the time with leaders could be more focused than on what's uniquely happening in this school, because that's what I found myself finding back in Florida.
Excellent point, Heather, and that's why that spring academy or a spring workshop on May ninth, you look at what the subjects are, that's exactly what you need to know as a board. It's understanding your role as a board member is like the first thing. It's kind of real basic. And it's more the broad, broad brush strokes rather than getting into the minutia and the weeds of how tertiary funding has, the history of tertiary funding in Wisconsin. That's not something that you need to know first.
We could look at, you know, another thing would be, that I heard some boards down in, at the convention talk about is, essentially you assign another board member as kind of a mentor to kind of be able to bounce questions and things like that. It's not so much like, okay, hey, you know, have this, this policy-related question or whatever, but just, you know, typically what happens at this meeting or what happens at that meeting. You know, trying to look at, you know, from a board member's perspective of, hey, you know, Sandy, when you prepare for a meeting, how do you attack all the information you get on Friday? You know, or something like that. I mean, I think those are good pieces of information that if you had a, for lack of a better term, a board buddy, that could kind of walk people through it and say, you know, hey, this is information to have, but this is the information you really want to focus on or things like that. Because we do, I mean, if you printed all of our board information, we put in a board packet for a typical meeting, it's several hundred pages of, of information. And so, not that you, you wouldn't look at it all, but there are certain things that are probably going to stick out more than others and more veteran board members, I think, would be able to provide that insight. Might be something to look at.
And, and we, we always encourage questions. I think Sue has been also very good, you know, just not sure. Is this something that's appropriate for me to, to do, comment on? What should I do? And I end up usually referring her to Nick and if, if I don't, if I'm not able to answer the question. Did you have some comment?
I was just going to say one thing that was really helpful to me when I was campaigning or thinking about doing this, was just going to the River Channel and watching board meetings.
That'll cure your insomnia, huh?
And I still ran.
How often do you do that, Carrie? I mean, is that like a, is that a weekly thing for you?
Well, anyway, we're getting back onto, let's see, I was on planning, so Tim, I'm right with you. This planning and just visioning also is another section that's at the end. Are, are things that we're going to be talking about at the next couple of work sessions?
Just a couple, just a couple of things to touch on, because some people may say, well, I don't, I don't really know. Do we do that? Do we not do that? So, things that are kind of tough on some of these questions, like we have sound risk management practices in place to include regular review of insurance options. I mean, it's, it's, uh, we have a more robust district staff than let's say if we had a district of five hundred students. And you had a superintendent and just a business manager, not a, you know, CFO and a business manager and other folks to be able to do some of these different things and HR department stuff. So, some of these things, although in certain districts, you know, it's kind of many hands make light work type thing. This happens, it's just, it happens at more the administrative level than the board level, because we have people that can help do that. Coming from a smaller district, when, you know, you used to look around the room and say, who does that? And they'd look at you and they'd say, you do that, type of thing. But, so some of these questions are kind of hard, I think, for our district, because although it's good for you to have a handle on what we're doing with these things, you know, getting into our risk management practices, I would think would be a little bit in the weeds, but I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, Jamie's the attorney. Maybe he thinks we should spend more time talking about our mitigation processes.
No, I mean, if, if, there's one thing I got out of the convention was that is we should not be spending board time on stuff that should be delegated to the administration. So, I think figuring out the difference there is, you know, should reports be given to board members and, look, going, scrolling down to that annually review, the district's non-instructional support services. Well, look at food service, for example. How many food serviced, how many times was Peg Ellers was here? I mean, she was here at least three times in the last year. Not to mention, we have June and July, which is when you split up the reports, because we said we don't want them anymore.
I like how you said, when I've split them up, because the last two years we haven't, and you keep reminding me that we're going to do that. So, yeah, it's either going to be May and June, or it's going to be June and July, where we'll split up the reports and we do both the building level reports and then also the different departments. But that's something, yeah, that we've been doing. And I think in the last three years, we added the non-instructional departments has, more of the operations departments. I don't think we were doing that as much, you know, prior to about three years ago. So, we do try to cover the non-instructional support items. Transportation, not so much, but now that we have a transportation assistant director, I'm sure we could, uh-
We'll be seeing an annual report then, huh?
Yeah, I think so.
And Mr. President, I would say, I mean, so when I read these, I mean, so I was the not sure for risk management. I mean, my thought was, I'm, I'm, I'm sure, I assume we do. But having just recently served on a board that was publicly chastised for not asking questions, I'm a little like, do we? I don't know that we do. So, I mean, I think when I read this, it's not, it's not necessarily saying the board does this. So, even the, we have a process to annually review. That "we" to me is the district. So, I don't, I don't want the board to be in the weeds doing that. I'm sure we do have it. And it kind of gets back to maybe, when I first started, we played a little bit with kind of what do your reports look like, Nick? And no, we don't want twenty-page reports at each board meeting, but it kind of raises that question. Are there things that as a board annually, we should be seeing in a bulleted list or something from Nick saying? Just so you know, we did our annual review of insurance or, or whatever. I mean, that, I mean, you know, so I don't know where that balance is. But that's when I was answering not sure. It was because, well, I assume we do, but I, I don't know, yeah.
No, I think that's, that's, that's fine. And, and that's part of some things we'll look at too, is kind of that annual list and, and bringing back the annual board calendar of all the different things, kind of what goes on at the different months and stuff like that. So, we can, you know, board members can look back to that and say, oh yeah, I guess we did talk about that. Or, or it was a report that Tim talked and most people slept.
And you've also-
I mean, it's, oh.
Heather, you also, you mentioned a good point, and that is, there's some subjectivity to all these evaluation tools. It's like, the way that I'm answering this, am I, you know, is it definitive or is it something that I'm, I'm not sure if I, I know it? That's okay. I mean, I'm not expecting that we're, I think it would be odd if we were seven oh on, on everything here. Because again, I'm, rarely do I feel like something is fully achieved when it comes to board operations. I think we can improve in different areas. But for instance, this district's financial statements on a monthly basis. I think it was during the middle of this last year that we started that, so.
And we did it every other month, right? Yeah, yeah, bimonthly.
Right.
And that was just, hey, let's just talk about the variations that are more than, plus minus five percent just to- And again, so like some of these things apply and it's, you know, some of these things we've, we've talked through, but, you know, and the board has said, hey, actually, we don't want that on a monthly basis. I mean, you do review the financial statements on a monthly basis and the consent agenda, it's just, we don't actually have a separate report on it, so.
I'm just curious, go to the, on this last one, on budgeting, which is, uh, our community, do you see that? Planning, okay, keep going down, budgeting. The last one on budgeting. We have, our community believes the district is a responsible steward of its financial resources. I don't know if this score is necessarily better than before, but I'm just curious, is there any comments in this area? Because, alright, what's your? Okay. Alright, the fickle, yeah, it's a fickle gauge. Yeah, well, and that's the thing is with, if, without doing a community survey, which we heard down at the convention, some school districts do these annual surveys going out to the community. Short of that, you know, getting three or five people that tell you what they're thinking, is that how the whole community? It's very hard to say that, you know, talking to a few people-
That's how your group of contacts thinks, but there's twenty-five other groups out there.
Right, right, exactly. Right, yep.
Usually hear the extremes. I mean, the people are usually upset to the point where they want to actually reach out to you and say something.
Alright, district operations, uh, we've got to not go down to, we have initiatives in place to facilitate leadership succession in key administrative positions.
Okay, so this was one I had a question about. I mean, so we, we did just this year approve the organizational flow chart that we haven't had in the district. If the board would like something other than that, like if they would like, if they would like us to name who gets the position, should, I mean, should something happen? I mean, I think it actually worked out quite well for us this year. Actually, it was last year, I think, we approved it and it worked out quite well when we got ourselves into a position where we had a, a key position that was open and we utilized that flow chart and, and Aaron was elevated and it's turned out quite well for us. So, if there's something you're not getting with that, please, I, I don't know what else to do with it. I just need some feedback as to what you'd like.
If I may, and I, I'm just going to speak for myself. I, I think the district, you Nick, you're doing a lot of really good things. From a communication standpoint, as far as the succession planning, just as an example, I'm sure there's a great plan in place and maybe you have that structure like, we just don't know it.
But I, I guess I don't know what that means, like, like if, if I was to leave, who would have, get my job? Or if Tim was to leave, who would get his? Or, I mean, I don't know what that means. I mean, I, I would just assume that the succession plan would look to the people that directly report below first before anything else. Or what, what are, what are you wanting, I guess? I, is that what, I mean, you just got to kind of tell me, kind of what the thoughts on?
It, it could be a variety of different things, and I'm only talking for myself.
Yeah, no, no, I'm fine with-
But, I mean, ultimately, it could be, here's, here's your plan, and this is likely how it might go. Or perhaps there's an org chart, you know, we're in closed session, you say this is what we're anticipating. And maybe that changes every year, depending on performance and things along those lines. So, it could be a variety of things. It's just, we don't, as a board with you, we don't have those conversations. And it's, and I'm sure you have a great plan in place, it's just when we have this question put in front of us and we're thinking, okay, so what happened over the last year? Did we have any exposure to frankly, anything? You know, we, we know that you have the org chart, but that isn't necessarily, necessarily succession planning. So, again, that's just from my perspective.
Yeah, and I'd be more happy to, to schedule some time in closed session and kind of talk about the key positions and, and, and different things and what that, and what that looks like. Yeah, I, I mean, if the board would like me to do that, that's something I, I definitely can, uh, you know, it's kind of like you, you have your, you know, you have your list, your shortlist of, of different things as, as things open up. I mean, typically, it's not something that's really public. You know, from a standpoint of it's, it's, uh, there's always concern, you know, because of confidentiality, so. But if the board would like me to go through kind of when I look at leadership positions in the district and the thought process behind, should something happen? And I don't think, I'm not trying to think morbidly, you know, so as the directors are sitting over there going, what are you, writing us off already? But I mean, you know, there's a variety of different things that come into play. I'm more than happy to go through with kind of my thought process on what that is with the, with the board.
And if, if I may, if, if we're going to continue to review ourselves as a board and this type of, this topic comes up and we don't do something, likely you'll continue to see the same type of response.
Well, again, we can talk about this too. This is one survey, uh, develop, board development survey. There's probably a half dozen out there. This just happens to be the one that WASB puts forth. But then getting down, this is the legislative advocacy, they call it community engagement, so I'm not sure. I think of community, my ideas of a community engagement is a lot different than having our legislature, legislators coming to board meetings, but we're getting tours of our buildings. I think that that's kind of something separate, but that in this area seemed to be where we had, you know, lower scores, if you will, where more partially achieves of-
You know, we heard that at the last one and that didn't fall on deaf ears. We, Tim has made multiple attempts to get legislators, both Shannon Zimrim and Sheila, before she was now the state agricultural secretary. And our biggest challenge is their schedule versus ours, being that they tend to leave for Madison Monday afternoon and come back at the end of the week, you know, on Thursdays. So, it, yeah, we will continue to try to press that as far as making those connections and, and getting those folks here. I, I don't want you to think that, hey, we heard you say this and then we didn't do anything about it. We absolutely, we absolutely did and we'll continue to try to, try to get them here.
Right, but we'll continue to put this on the agenda and be kind of a open sounding board if members want to bring it. Bring concerns, legislative concerns, we'll talk about those. And I assume it could be led by one of the three that said we're only partially achieving this part. So, we'll see if we get some more discussion on legislative issues then. What's the next? My, I missed a page here because it says it's not downloading. After community engagement, what do we got? Policy and- Policy, and.
So we have, I mean, that is something that we have, we have implemented over the last two years, the policy review cycle. I mean, the review cycle is, is achieved, but we haven't had, you know, we haven't gone through five years of it to say that we've fully achieved the, the review of every policy, so.
Right, have we even gotten to the policies that promote safe schools and positive learning environments yet?
Safe schools, yes, that was the 800 series. So I would say, although it's certainly with buildings and grounds, that'll cover it in a greater degree, and I believe that's a couple of years out still.
Okay, so we're in the process. Maybe we'll get a fully achieved on that, down the road. Vision, that's our last one here, and we had. I got the same message here, there's a problem loading the page, so how, how did we do on vision?
I think pretty well.
Scroll more, scroll, scroll. There, okay, so that, what's that last one say? We have a process that allows key stakeholders to help create, refine our vision and strategic priorities. Well, we've talked about this before too, we've already said that we're, you know, after the construction is done, we're going to be revisiting HSD 2025, but it's not something we're doing, you know, necessarily right away. It'll be a process, we're going to, you know, talk about how that will look, but I.
I mean, last time, that was pretty extensive, Tracy, a lot of stakeholder groups.
Well, it took like a year and a half, or?
Okay.
All right, very good.
So we will, I mean, I don't want people to think that that's falling on deaf ears, we definitely headed down that path. The other thing is, is we do have, we do have ability, you know, some of the questions on there. We do have avenues for the community to voice concerns or questions. Connections at HSD, or sorry, at HudsonRaiders.org, Tracy Fields, that email, almost daily.
Yes, pretty much so.
Yeah, and so people are, and responding, or they have questions, or I cancel school, and the roads stay just fine all day long type of things. Those all go to that, and then what happens is Tracy, if they have questions, it gets disseminated amongst the correct, you know, who should handle that. So, sometimes people think, you know, when you have those, you know, comments boxes, or whatever it is on a website, it just goes into a black hole. Actually, every one of them gets read, if, if there starts to be a theme on some things, constant questions. Tracy alerts me to that and says, hey, we're getting a lot of questions on this, not to mention, you know, some of the social media platforms. But I just want to make sure that there, people understand, there are those avenues already, and we can look at expanding, you know, different options as well with community engagement as far as, you know, whether it be surveys, or listening sessions and things along those lines. Not only just with our community, but with our, with our, as Jamie and I were hearing, with our students and with our staff as well.
All right, anything else, any other comments on the self-assessment then?
Yeah, just on this last one, I was the one that put not achieved or started for the, we have a process that allows key stakeholders, administrator staff, so on. Frankly, I'm just, I'm sure we're doing stuff, you know, to your point, Tracy has, you know, an email address. I went to the website just looking for that, that email address, and I struggled a little bit, maybe just because I'm not terribly bright, but it just, I don't know what I don't know, and, and if I'm struggling with it, I have to think there are other people in the community that are struggling with it as well. So again, I'm, I'm sure there's something great there, and I probably was a little strong in my not achieved, but again, that was just my quick.
No, absolutely, and, and we can look at it and see, you know, if there are certain areas, you know, we obviously take feedback on the website from people that, you know, so, as, as we all know, sometimes when you get very close to something, it's easily found, it's easily to, you know, to work through and stuff like that, and you don't always think about, okay, the average person that's coming to our website maybe twice a year or something like that, how, how quickly can they find, can they find those types of things? You know, and maybe the, the big box at the bottom that says questions or concerns or whatever, we can move that towards the top, or we can, you know, get a link down to it towards the top so that it's more easily found potentially, so, absolutely.
And we do, like with our mailers and that, the information that we send out, we include it there too as a option for folks, but.
Yeah, and again, it wasn't intended as, you know, you know, gosh darn it.
No, I, no, I know, absolutely.
I just think it should be easy for people to click on the comment section if they're going to give a positive comment, but really hard to find if they're going to have a complaint. That was sarcasm, folks, sorry.
Mr. President, Mr. President, just one final thought, I mean, what, what I want, I almost hesitate to say this because I don't, because I don't have the suggestion, but if we're going to spend the time doing this, what I feel like we should be doing as a board then is saying, here are the two questions from this entire survey that we most think we need to work on, and then we're working on them, and then next year when we take the survey, we'll see a change because we were intentional about working on them versus just talking through, I mean, I appreciate the responses, but it's a lot of staff will do this, staff will do that, and I feel like there should be some onus on us if we're using this tool, that we should decide, these are the two things on here that we're kind of the least happy with where the answers landed, and what are we going to do about that? So I don't know if that could be maybe a future agenda item, and then I would commit, and hopefully we all would commit to looking through this again with eyes toward that. What are the one or two things that we want to see our scores?
Well, I saw, I, I see three, I see this visioning thing, which is going, is going to be different. It's going to be different this year, we're going to be aligning the goals and expanding that from the board level on down. So, starting with the next couple of work sessions, so that's one area, the other was the legislative advocacy, and then what was the first? Succession planning, no, it was orientation, that's what it was, a new member orientation. So I think that those would be the three areas, although if you want to throw a fourth in there, the succession.
No, I like, I mean, a couple, I like the idea of let's, it's these three questions in particular that we're going to try and do work that changes our responses next year.
Yeah, we're not terrible at everything, just, just a few, all right.
Well, and, and no, and I, and I think, Heather hit the nail on the head, and I think, like you said, I, I think the next couple of work sessions are going to be good, because I think, and Jamie and I talked about this weekend, if I went around to the seven board members and asked each of you how you define success as far as our school district being successful in what we're doing, I think there's a strong possibility we would have seven different answers. Not that, not that it's, it's, it's not kid-oriented, but I mean, when you're, when you look at, at what lens, and so, one of the things we want to do is, is try to get that common vision from the board, is, as a board, how, how would you define success? So then that way, we can build backwards on our goals and hit those areas where maybe they're lacking, or, or areas that need more, more communication and things. And so, that is, that is the plan for the next couple of work sessions to, to work through that, and to try to get a total understanding as a board, you know, what does that look like, and then kind of keep working our, working our way backwards. So, it doesn't feel like we're shooting in different directions, and the administration, okay, the administration will take care of this, administration will take care of that, and things like that. So, I, I think those are great points.
All right, very good, any other comments then on the board self-assessment? And I think it would be a good idea if we just took a three-minute recess before we tackle the action items in our closed session. Recall the meeting to order, and we have four topics for action, first is consent items, and I'll entertain a motion with the wording from regarding the expenditures.
Mr. President.
Rob.
I move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kerry, all those in favor say aye, aye, those opposed, the consent items are approved as printed. Next up is the support staff compensation system. So, is this going to be Andrea, Tim?
Sure, yeah, I can, I mean, we can all work together on the presentation, but.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Andrea, I thought you were going to talk about the retiree that we had in our consent item.
I don't look at the detailed consent agenda every time.
But you do such a great job talking about the people that are retiring.
I apologize, I, I. It's typically, yeah, teachers that.
Yeah, this person's not a teacher, so, okay.
Okay.
My apologies.
We invite everyone to the recognition banquet, which I will put a plug in for that, that's this coming Monday night at the Hudson House. Super excited about that annual fun event, and we are.
Monday night.
Monday night, it's this Monday night, and so, yes, it's a month early, so I just wanted to highlight that as an important thing that's coming up. We have great turnout from our staff, a lot of people will be there. In terms of the support staff compensation structure proposal, it's basically identical to what had been presented to you during the board work session, where we had lots of discussion about the different pieces. I really appreciate the puzzle from the perspective, again, and just a quick synopsis, is that it's, everything funnels into that base hourly wage. How do we make that competitive? That has to be, especially with support staff, hourly rates has to be competitive with the market. So the market-based hourly rate, and then we maintain the steps of steps one, two, through three. And then performance percentage is that plus one, plus two, so the opportunity for more. This current system plus an opportunity for more is our theme of this proposal. And then the market stipends differentials, giving us a little more flexibility to adjust to specific high needs positions. And then to work with, you know, we already have existing differentials, for example, with custodians, for the night custodians and the different shifts. So working off that some more, we're certainly finding it to be a struggle to hire some positions, as I think most local employers are finding it challenging to hire for certain positions at this point. I think every place, actually, I saw if you, you got a free burger if you applied at Burger King. So they're being creative, I think a lot of people are, and we are working on that as well, trying to keep abreast of all the different developments. Then there's also the memo that's been in front of you guys a couple of times now too, in terms of the overall structure, the goal is recruitment, retention, and the recognition, the performance. I can go through it as, in as much detail as you would like, or as little detail, but again, it's the same information. I think an important point to note though is that the performance evaluation tool that we're going towards is still a work in progress. That is not a done tool, the concept is, but we really want that to be a collaborative discussion with our staff. And so we certainly heard feedback from board members about some of the verbiage associated with those tools, and we've been sending that back. For example, the paraprofessional tool that we're working on, Aaron's going to be working on with her team and her staff to make sure that it truly is a reflection of what we're looking for, and not odd language or archaic language, that wasn't the goal at all. We want it to be clear, we want it to be real-world application to our staff. And so that's going to be a continued work in progress, and again, none of this goes into effect, assuming, I mean, if the board would approve it, none of it would go, even start going into effect until the start of the 1819 school year, to be placed at the end of the 1819, effective with the 1920, so.
Okay, so, the evaluation tool is going to continue to be developed and wordsmithed by committees of.
The committees, there's going to be, it's the supervisors that are responsible for working with their staff members.
All right, and then, but the reason this is on our action items is that there's, you know, this should be voted on, you know, as far as the concept. We, we were trying to do a 30,000-foot view at our work session as far as just generally, are people in favor of the concept, opposed to the concept? I didn't hear anybody who was opposed to the concept of performance pay. Now, what you have is different hourly rates for different positions, and the reason is, again, market, a lot of it is the market. You pay your professionals differently than you might a custodian or an assistant. And the basic concept is, there's three steps based on years of service. So you pay the people who are loyal and longevity, who you don't have to be training like a new employee. There's value to all of that, so you pay them a little bit more. Then you have them evaluated by the people appropriate to do that, try to have as much of an objective criteria as you can, knowing that you're never going to be totally objective.
And we wouldn't want it even, we want that subjectivity to be built in.
Right, and so then we offer a little bit more, and it's a 1%, 2% thing. So, the board would set, now, and it's all dependent on them meeting certain discipline criteria as well. If they're under probation, or they've had any write-ups or anything, they're not eligible for any increase.
Exactly.
If they aren't on probation and they would be eligible, it's going to be dependent on what the board sets for particular years. So the board has the discretion in tight budget years to say, I'm sorry, folks, we're only going to do a 1% this year, or half percent or whatever. Or if inflation starts taking off and we think that we need to keep pace, it needs to be more than that. Whatever the base is, that's what the people would get, assuming they're at that proficient, it'd be the equivalent of proficient.
Yes, effective in all the standards, as long as they're effective in all the standards, or not even all the standards, I believe it's, there's an option for a little bit of development. But yeah, definitely, to get beyond that, they have to be distinguished in certain priority standards.
Right, and, and an extra 1%, so we're talking about somebody that's making $16 an hour as an experienced employee, an extra 1% is going to get them an extra 16 cents an hour. Right?
Yep, and I, I mean, the ITS one I have pulled up right here, so like, at the step one, the market rate is the 2103, the plus 1% is 2124, plus 2% is 2145, so 42 cent difference between the steps, or between the 1% and 2% placement.
So that's the basic summary, and we want to get this in place so that the evaluations are being done in the next school year, and then it affects the pay for 2019, or 2019, 2020.
Exactly, yep, so we want to have that information, if board approved, we would start communicating it out tomorrow. I would start the process to make sure that our staff are becoming aware of it, they're, they know the significance of that evaluation tool, and so hopefully that'll increase that dialogue, and we'll nail those things down, have it all set in place before the start of the year.
And this would be, goes to retention, right?
It does.
All right, so is there any further questions or concerns about bringing this up now, or do we, is it time for a motion?
I just have a question.
Sure.
These 1% and 2%, he just said that they're not carved in stone if the board decides they're going to be less, is that what he's talking about? These 1% and 2% could change?
The basis, the base increase is determined by the board, so if the board sets a 0.5, base increase across the board.
You're talking about the cost of living increase that the board talks about every year?
Yes, that would be like the 0.5, or 1.0 for easy, and then if you're a plus 1%, then they would get.
Be one and a half, if you get a half a point for a cost of living and you're at 1, you get 1 and a half.
Yes.
Right, exactly.
And the board can come back, I mean, if they say, whoa, we want to do it to be a plus 0.5 and a plus 0.1, I mean, the board can always reserve the right to change it, now, we wouldn't want it to do, you know.
But if we vote on this, you can't change these 1% and 2% increases for their experience, right, or whatever.
Well, those aren't for experience, so that's for performance.
For performance, okay.
So that's purely for their performance, so, yeah, you could, the district, or the administration can't change it, but after a year, the board could say, you know what? That didn't work out the way we want to, we want to change those to 0.5 and 1.
Okay.
So I mean, it's, it's, it's no different than TSS, I mean, you have the ability, you have the ability to change it. We don't prefer to do it midstream because then it starts to become some issues with, you know, the employees saying, well, how come they got this and I didn't get an opportunity to get that? But the other thing to keep in mind is, so these are hourly wages, so they're not, they don't compound.
Right.
So, for example, that, that 2% wage, that base matrix over there, plus 2%, the following year, it's, it's not another base increase plus 2% on those numbers. It reverts back to the base again, and then adds 2%, so that it, it's, it's not as, it's not compounding.
And it's not going to be retroactive.
It's not retroactive, no, we have definitely learned that lesson.
So somebody, if this board, or whatever board is in place when the dollars are figured, decides that the cost of living raises again are going to be 2% to 3%, which they've been, every year I've been on the board, they've been at least that much. Somebody could end up with 4%, right, based upon the performance of 2% plus a 2% cost of living raise. Has anyone done any calculations about what this could potentially cost?
Yep, Tim's done that.
Yep.
Yeah, so, similar to teacher salary structure, we looked at where we would project employees to fall along this 1% and 2%. So, we then projected that out, so what you're looking at to implement this is about a $30,000 per year piece. So, and I'll say it's a stacking 30, because we're implementing this one-third of the employees over three years, so a third, a third, a third. So first year would be $30,000 impact in 1920, and then 2021 will be a $60,000 impact, and then a $90,000 impact.
Okay, and that's just based on these 1% and 2%, that has nothing to do with any cost of living raise that the board.
It's just, right, it's just.
It's just, right, it's just separating out this, this particular program.
Thank you. That explains it.
And that's spread out over how many employees roughly? Do you know, Andrea, that this applies to, supports that?
Over four hundred.
Four hundred full-time, and probably another...
We have a lot of piecemeal positions.
How are raises given to them now?
It's just the base increase.
The base increase. So we have step one, step two, step three.
Okay.
So we pay the ones who are exceptional the same as we pay the ones who are just not on probation.
Mediocre.
Right.
All right, all right. Thank you for the explanation.
People that aren't doing at least an adequate job no longer work for us. I mean, we tend to, that's the, there's not a subpar...
Thank you for the explanation.
Mr. President, I think the real plus with this is that in all levels of staffing, we're getting the performance base element in there. And I think that that's gonna be good for both the retention and, and giving them recognition with, you know, actually determ, actually being able to say how well they're doing in specific areas that are related to their jobs. I think that's a real plus. And then I just wanna ask, 'cause I'm not gonna mess around with it tonight. You got my email?
I did, get your email.
And you'll share it with Erin?
Erin, yes, I already have, yeah.
Oh, good. Okay, thanks, guys.
And we have looked at what the plus one and plus two percent would do in terms of comparability amongst our districts, our set districts. And certainly there's ambiguity because we don't yet know what the increases are gonna be going into next year, but it doesn't put us out of line. We still have some positions that are well under the median, some that are over the median. But because it's relatively minuscule between the plus one and plus two, between the steps, it wasn't significant.
That this system will help attract new people to get employed by the district in some of the harder-to-fill...
Hopeful. I think another area that will is our effort with the custodians, for example, to reinstate the three steps. We gotta move faster on that first step, get them to a more competitive wage there. So it's those type of adjustments that are gonna have to be continuing. I mean, it's the market-based adjustments. But we're hopeful, just like with our teachers, we talk about the T S S system, is that it's your opportunity to move in a way you haven't been able to in the past. That's similar here. There hasn't ever been a plus one, plus two opportunity, and now there would be, and that would be appealing. What will probably be the most significant would be the market differential, or the differentials and any kind of stipends that we implement for like the one-to-one positions, and raising that hourly rate more, because those are definitely the most difficult to fill, the piecemeal positions.
But retention is a big piece too.
Oh, yes.
Sandy said, I mean, we, yes, it's the attraction piece, but I think the retention piece is a big one for us because being in a constant hiring mode is taxing on the system.
Mr. President, quick question.
Yes, Heather.
So do market, I assume there are times when market rate adjustments actually go down, right? I mean, where the economy changed and it went down. So I'm assuming in that case, the, the, the three steps would slide, but people wouldn't receive decreases in pay? It's just that new people who are brought on will be brought on with the new, with the new stepped...
What we've done is, we've had, you know, the board-approved percentage increase, but we have made it different for different positions. Just, I believe it was two years ago, when we were specific to each support staff position based on the market. So some went up three percent, some went up one percent. It wasn't, I think, a former board member, I always used to call it the peanut butter approach to compensation. It wasn't that. It was an individualized analysis based on market comparability.
Are there ever times when you'd, even when you'd actually, when the market would push rate, push your hourly rates down?
Haven't been part of that. But again, we've given a lesser percentage for some.
All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I would have moved to approve the support staff compensation system as appro, as proposed.
Second.
There's bone of motion, second. And I guess I didn't necessarily weigh in, I did at the work session, but just because now it's getting voted on here. This is a continuation of what we set out to do, what, three years ago, when we said that we wanted to get away from necessarily treating everybody the same regardless of effort? And as a person who personally, I mean, I always liked the idea of if I do my job well, I'm gonna be better compensated. And that's what this system tries to do. No one's going to get hugely rich off of being, you know, exceptional in their job. But it's just part of pride, and I, I don't like treating somebody who's barely keeping their job the same as somebody who's doing, putting in that extra effort. And the thirty thousand a year cost is a cost, but I think it could pay itself easily in retention and not having to train. Retraining people. So is there any other comments? Otherwise, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. And next up is the elementary boundary committee selection.
Okay, you have a document, I believe, Tim pulls it up here. We worked through the elementary boundary committee process. As you can see on that document, we have at least three parents from each of the elementaries. Tracy put together this document for us, and let me just, I'm just trying to pull it up on my computer so I can see it a little easier. Couple of things that we, that we, we talked about the priorities in which we selected people. There was priority given to parents that had younger children in the system. So like, for example, if they had, their youngest child is gonna be in fourth grade next year. They didn't get as much consideration as somebody that's say, let's had an incoming kindergartner or a three-year-old and a second grader. Because, you know, if the board does choose to, in what we heard from the consultants, choose the grandfather folks in, the one that does make the most sense would be kids going into their fifth grade year, you know, their final year. The other thing that was a huge consideration for us was, as you look at that map on the wall that Tracy's put together, we wanted to have a broad geographic representation of the district. And so I know it might be kinda hard to see from, from where you're at, but she's actually color-coded the different stars, or whatever those things are, based on the groups that they represent. Is that fair, Tracy?
Correct.
So you can see, we have pretty good coverage across the district. So we have reached out, Tracy has contacted all the individuals that applied and did not make it, you know, like, that weren't selected, and explained to them the rationale behind it. Also given the opportunity to be part of a select communication group, that they would get things versus the, you know, the general public that would go to the website to find stuff. They would get stuff emailed the same night of meetings and things like that. So they would be, you know, as much in the know as you could be, and then also told that they can always attend the meetings as a spectator, like any other board-appointed committee and things like that. What I'd like you to do, you can look down the list. We also have representatives, we have some representatives that we have not confirmed yet. That'd be the city of Hudson, the town of Hudson representative, and the town of Troy representative. So I guess as the board approves this list, it would be, you know, they'd prove, they would approve that there would be a representative from those three municipalities, should we be able to acquire somebody to attend. Sometimes they, they don't want to send anybody. So I mean, it's...
And I, I have heard from Troy in their, with the elections, they're putting the request out to their folks and expect to have somebody back. The same is true for town of Hudson and the city of Hudson. Whether they have somebody who decides to take the charge, that's to be determined.
Is there any prohibitive criteria, like, for those town representatives or the city representative? Like, they can't be a Willow River parent, or, you know, so that we're not...
We have not done that, just because the decision on who to select has been given to each of those entities.
So let them pick their criteria.
Correct.
And, so, all right.
Mr. President, it looks like we have, this list is about plus or minus thirty-one. How many people in total did we have apply? Just roughly.
We probably had about double that amount as far as parent applicants. So we did, Dr. Olet went out to all of the parent groups, had a meeting with those folks. And then we also sent a direct email out to all parents, allowing them the opportunity to, or inviting them to apply. And then we also did the same for elementary staff. We didn't have nearly the number for elementary staff who applied.
But good interest, the way it sounds.
Yes. And all of the folks, or almost all of the folks that were, were not invited to be part of the committee did respond in wanting to be part of that key communicator group.
We, we do have on this list of parent representatives, several parents that represent different real estate developers. And we felt like there was ample representation from those, especially also knowing that RSP and Associates is supposed to be driving their information from having those conversations from the different developers and municipalities. So overall, we think we have a pretty good group.
Sorry. We did select one representative, though it isn't the only representative, after everything was said and done, who does have a boundary exception currently. So resides in an area in the district where child attends in a different school than where they reside. Just wanting to make sure...
We did not allow any open enrollment parents.
No, not that, no.
So that makes sense. Well, the reason I say that is because there's, one of our elementary buildings, the president of their organization is a open enrollment. I mean, it's great. I mean, they're, they're fully embracing being a part of, you know, that school community, but it's just kind of interesting that their, their PTO president is, is a parent from another district.
So total number of members of the committee is forty-one, ten of which are administration, and of those ten administrations, just each elementary school principal?
Correct.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Carrie beat you, Sue. Motion by Rob. Carrie seconded it. All those in favor of approving the selection of the committee, subject to those three municipalities selecting their representative, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Next up on the action items is revision to policy one forty-one. This is our second reading.
Yep.
We had the first reading at the last work session. One of the questions raised at that work session was, you know, we're going through this massive five-year policy review, relying heavily on WASB. There was mentioned that WASB was the genesis of the policy that was passed last year, and we used that policy for election of officers in May. And this is the one that I did not do, I confess, I did not do massive investigation and research. Kinda just took the policy at face value and didn't think through, and in, it was only until like the day of the meeting, literally. We happened to be having a meeting, joint meeting with River Falls School Board. It was put together by Representative Zimmerman. And I asked River Falls, how do you do your nominations? Well, we do those in May. And I say, yeah, I think a lot of people do them in May, but you can do them at the very end of April. It's just gotta be within a thirty-day time period. But I said, how do you do your nominations? Well, it's verbal. Oh, you don't do written? No. All right. So then the question at the last work session was, if WASB had recommended this procedure using ballots and making it writing, then why are we going away from it? So I contacted WASB today, and that's why each of you should have two emails, one from Tim Miner and one from Dr. Nick, because I asked both of them to forward it, and they did it almost simultaneously. And in that email, it is a rule, or proposed rule by WASB. And, and so now each of you have that, as well as four samples. And in none of the samples do they talk about written ballots for nomination. And in the board procedure or rule of one forty-one, which is, happens to be our policy number, one forty-one, it doesn't indicate anywhere about written ballots. In fact, says the opposite. It's, it kind of assumes it'd be verbal. So I was talking to one of the attorneys, and I asked him, have you ever recommended written ballots, secret ballots? He goes, no, I'm not aware of any districts that do it. So we, so therefore, that answers that question, is what by this change that's been proposed and approved with a first reading, all we're doing is allowing for verbal nominations. And in the recommended rule, it says that nominations can be made by anyone, including themselves, if they wanna nominate themselves. You can do that. It's just verbal nominations, but giving a person the chance to accept or reject the nomination is critical. And at our work session, Sandy brought up the example of my very first meeting, and she nominated me for an office, and I withdrew my nomination. So that can happen, and it's simply, you move on with the rest of the nominations. Once you're satisfied, nominations are closed. Then you move to a written ballot, if you have more than one nominee. If you don't have more than one nominee, you completely dispense with the balloting procedure and just move by acclamation, which is the way that, we had done it for the four years prior to last year, right, Sandy?
Yeah. Am I to assume this, the way this is written here, what's in black is what's the current policy, correct?
Correct.
Okay, written ballots shall be cast for all officer positions. That's the current policy. Well, I just am chuckling at that, because I've been on this board six years, and last year is the only year we've ever done a written ballot.
Written ballots shall be cast, meaning that you elect with a written ballot.
Oh, not nominate.
Not nominate, right.
So there's no real explanation ever we had in our, our, our policy about the nominations. What we're talking about is the nominations.
We've changed it.
The nominations have always been done since I've been on this board, and you said, I'm the senior member now, so I have the most knowledge.
Yes.
They've always been done. He said it. They've always been done verbally, always, until last year. And they, and it's worked very well every year.
But we still have a secret ballot for the, if it's contested?
Yes.
So is there any further questions about this change? Otherwise, I entertain a motion on the second reading.
Jamie, out of curiosity?
I just wanna clarify one thing.
Yes, Rob.
The nominations are done verbally, but the balloting is done in writing.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
What was the catalyst in, I mean, understanding last year was the first year apparently this changed? What was your catalyst in wanting to change it back? And I'm just curious.
Well, just for that, for the, for the simple fact, if somebody wants to nominate someone for a position, and they shouldn't have, they shouldn't be precluded from nominating somebody else if their first nomination withdraws the nomination. So I nominate board member A. Board member A withdraws the nomination. If we do it by written ballot, then we won't find out until all the ballots are turned in that A is withdrawing the nomination. And then by that time, it's too late, and then person who nominated A cannot nominate anyone else. It's just, it's, it's just simply going back to the way mostly we did it before, and just different wording, I guess. And it's kind of codifying the way that we had done it before. But that's what would be my, A, is give a person a chance to withdraw their nomination if they don't want to be nominated for a particular office. And B, give the person who's doing the nominating a chance to nominate somebody else if they so choose.
Just to address the emails that were sent, and to address that we may have misled the board. We have the emails from W A S B's sample policy.
I just pulled up the sample policy. It's sample policy two. Sample policy one did not have a clarification of the process. They said to be identified. Sample policy two, which is still on their website right now, is verbatim what I took as their recommendation.
So I just, I wanna clarify for the board that the administration did not intentionally mislead or make that policy up on our own, that we did take it from their website.
Well, so that also shows that lawyers are fallible, because the lawyer I talked to couldn't find it. He kept putting in the words, written ballot or written nomination. He couldn't come up with it.
Secret ballot, in writing, is how they, how it's referenced.
Okay. So he couldn't find it anyway. So I'm not saying that, and I didn't mean to imply that anyone... So he couldn't find it anyway, so, uh, I'm not saying that, and I didn't mean to imply that anyone, there was a misleading. It's just that, in the end, it's their draft po, uh, board officer election procedures, sample rule does not include anything that says that it would be in writing. But they have a sample policy that indicates that, that apparently, uh, no school district that I'm aware of, you know, utilizes, other than Hudson did it for last year.
Are you ready for the motion?
Sure.
I move to accept the draft policy number one forty-one board officers as shown in this document. Second.
Okay, motion by Sandy, second by Sue. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion stands, um, approved, and, uh, the policy has changed based on that second reading. So now we go to closed session, uh, motion, and we have three bases for which we would be going into closed session. So we need all three read.
I'll do it.
Very good.
I move to a closed session based upon pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five parent one parent F to consider the financial, medical, social, and personal histories of disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations, i.e. for the board to consider apparent requests compliant pursuant to policy number eight seven zero. And pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five parent one parent E, to discuss contract negotiations with construction contractors whenever competitive reasons require a closed session. And pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five parent one parent C, to consider the performance evaluation of administrative employees.
Second? Is there a second? Second by Carrie. All those in, in favor, we have to go to a roll call vote.
Yeah, roll call.
And it's, uh, alphabetical, so Brown?
Brown, aye.
Gerke?
Aye.
Kattas?
Kattas, aye.
Logland? Whitaker?
Whitaker, aye.
Johnson, aye. We are going to adjourn to closed session.